Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board. The meeting has come to session. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board Meeting. I'm Brian Gorman and I will be chairing this meeting. The meeting is video recorded by Westwood Media Center. If anyone else wishes to record the meeting, please identify yourself so the audience is aware, seeing none. As a friendly reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The meeting will be civil and all people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff comments. The board members will ask questions to the applicant. For the public hearing items, the public will be given an opportunity to comment for up to two minutes. Items that are not a public hearing, the opportunity for public comment will be at the discretion of the board. When it is time for the public comment period, the chair will call those wishing to speak to the podium to use the microphone. Please direct all comments and questions through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. And Abby, are there any changes to the agenda for this evening?
There are no changes.
Okay, great. So, calling to order, it is, again, it's 7:05. So, the first item on the agenda tonight is 10 Longwood Drive, Fox Hill Village, EIDR and EMM, Continued Public Hearing from August 13th.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having us back. As the chair said, we, my name is Johanna Schneider. I'm legal counsel for Fox Hill Village. We were last before this board on August 13th and we walked through our plans for an expansion of the existing Fox Hill facility. There were a handful of open issues, remaining questions identified by Beta in their peer review report. On or about August 22nd, we did submit written responses to each of the outstanding issues flagged by Beta. What we can do, depending on the board's preference, oh my goodness, okay, thanks. Depending on the board's preference this evening, we can either walk through the changes that have been made in response to those comments raised by Beta, or we can simply respond to any remaining questions that the board may have.
Yeah, that sounds good to go through each of the items.
Okay, so I'm going to hand this over to Charlie Shepherd of CDW, who's going to walk through the changes.
My name is Charlie Shepherd, CDW consultant, civil engineer. So, I'm going to write down the response letter. First comment was, they're looking for, these are all Beta comments at the beginning, looking for the retaining wall detail, and that is provided on sheet S206, which is LA 033. I think it's towards the end. I think it's actually the last sheet. I think it's sheet 25, I believe. Details are on that. Next comment, Beta mentioned the pedestrian rail on the retaining wall between the addition and the loading dock. There is a safety rail there because that drops down. I think it drops down about four feet or so. They asked to provide details of the light poles, foundations, and luminaries, and those are on the landscape plans. I believe it's that sheet. They also asked for us to provide earth movement calculations if it was greater than 250 cubic yards. That information is in a little table on the grading and drainage plan, which is C103. See that? Yep, right there, that's the little, so, that's now provided.
And if I just said that was under 250, so earth material movement is not specifically needed. I had put it in on the hearing notice and on the agenda just in case it triggered it, but you do not need a special approval for that.
It is over the...
I thought it was under 200...
No.
Oh, it is?
No, it is over.
Oh, it is over?
Yes.
Okay, then we should include that for the net total?
I believe the original submittal, the online submittal, they asked three questions, and if you answer yes to any one of them, then it triggers it. And one is slopes greater than 15%, right?
Yes, yep, that's also, yep.
Another one is...
If you're changing...
Grade is plus five feet from the existing grade, and we have that slope on the right side.
Okay.
But the totals we had in the chart, I apologize, I didn't memorize them. We've got a total cut volume of 2,800 cubic yards, a fill volume of 3,500, total earth moving of 6,150 cubic feet, cubic yards, excuse me.
What's a cubic feet?
Two of them's...
Cubic feet or cubic yards?
Cubic yards. I believe there's an error on the, the first one is cubic yards, the other two.
Okay, so it is more than we thought, so I do need that, okay. So, we should include in there that it's an earth material movement, EIDR as well.
Next comment said, "Provide location and details of proposed signs." There is no external signage for the building. Next one has to do with, there's an existing drain manhole on the west side that I believe when the survey was done, which was in January, everything was buried and they hadn't located it. So, actually, I went out two weeks ago. It's still buried, it's buried about six inches. I found it, located it. I couldn't lift it because I believe there's an entire bee's nest underneath it, and they wouldn't let me. So, but we've adjusted the design according to that because the survey showed another pipe connecting from CB to CB, and that's incorrect. So, we corrected that, and we have a new drain manhole that sits on top of that line. There was a comment from Beta to clean the existing drainage structures and pipes to remain. We've added a note to the grading and drainage plan to do just that. They recommended under drains for the rain gardens. We've shown under drains on both rain gardens with, I believe it's four foot wide by one foot deep infiltration trench and a four-inch perforated PVC pipe. Comment checklist for the stormwater report does not indicate any compliance, neither option was confirmed. The standard six was not applicable as there were no critical areas. The next comment, "Due to poor soils, Beta recommends including a silt fence with mulch-filled sediment tube." We did show a mulch-filled sediment tube before. I believe we had a 12-inch. We revised that to be an 18-inch. And then, they talked about a silt fence. The Conservation Commission, I talked to Karen Catron, and she said they don't like to use siltation fence, so they just like the sediment tubes in front of the construction fence. So, that's what's shown on the, on the plan. Provide temporary stockpile locations on the plan. The temporary stockpiles are now shown on the demolition and erosion control plan. We have two areas, same areas that are the lay-down areas. Said, "Provide a draft SWIP for review and comment." The draft was provided by the contractor. Recommend a condition requiring a copy of the final SWIP be made available to the town prior to construction, and they provide the final SWIP report. Next comment, "Provide updated standalone operations and maintenance plan, including the following, a map, 11x17, showing the location of the systems and facilities, including all structural and non-structural BMPs, and the location of the snow storage areas." That drawing is provided, 11x17, shows all the BMPs and shows the snow storage areas. Second one was a description delineation of public safety measures, and with that, we commented that there's, both rain gardens will have a wood-timber guardrail around them to keep cars from driving into them. Third part was an estimated operations and maintenance budget, and we've included that with the submittal.
We were asked to give trip estimates, and we had a time bond who does traffic engineering chime in on this. There's a little table we provided, the existing condition, weekday daily was 290 trips. We'll be, we are at 128 trips, so it's a reduction of more than 50%. AM peak hour, 34 trips. Ours will be 12. PM peak, 30, and ours will be 15. So, we're looking at somewhere around the 50% reduction from trip count.
Next comment said, "Coordinate landscaping with proposed snow storage." The landscaping plan was revised to show the snow storage areas. I believe we have two areas, one small one out front in one of the front islands, and then the back one is down at the bottom of the service entrance. Then we had comments from, that concludes the Beta comments, and now we go to some of the town department comments. Fire department asked what the actual address is. The site address is 10 Longwood Drive. The building is 30 Longwood, yes, the Baker House is actually 30 Longwood Drive. They requested a new radio box, be added to this project, a program in zone identifications to be determined with the fire department, and a radio box will be provided. They want a new fire FDC connection, location for the fire pump room, and that's been provided. We did a site enabling set that shows that new wattle line coming in to the existing building for the new fire pump room. And then they asked for a new hydrant down, down at the fire lane, and that's been provided as well. He wanted, fire chief wanted to confirm that the emergency access was wide enough for a fire apparatus, both including future apparatus. The service road is 20 feet wide, which is wide enough for the fire department. They also asked for a BDA, and the BDA will be installed for the new building addition. Now we get to the Board of Health comments. Says the applicant shall hire a licensed pest control company to inspect the premises for rodents. If rodent activity is found, extermination must be performed on interior buildings for a minimum of 10 days prior to building demolition. Interior bait stations shall be removed prior to building demolition. Rodent bait stations must be installed around perimeter of job site throughout the demolition process. All exterminations be performed by a licensed PCO, and report must be provided to the health department. And our comment said, "A licensed pest control company will be hired for initial inspection and treatment during the demolition phase of construction." They also say, "The applicant shall document that there are no underground tanks on site. If underground tanks are present, they must be removed according to DEP and local regulations." Documentation would be provided that there, I believe there are no underground tanks on the site. The applicant shall document there is no Freon on site. If present, Freon shall be professionally remediated and documentation provided to the Board of Health. And we responded that documentation will be provided to the Board of Health by the applicant that no Freon is present on the site. Another one, "Applicant shall submit in writing the source of water which will be readily available to control dust during demolition, and we respond that the contractor shall connect to the existing hydrant with a meter approved by the Westwood DPW." The applicant shall use a waste hall licensed by the Westwood Board of Health to dispose of construction debris, and we respond that the applicant will require that the waste hall obtain appropriate licenses from the Westwood Board of Health. Then, if necessary, the applicant shall provide a portable toilet licensed by the Westwood Board of Health, and we respond that the contractor will provide portable toilets and will be required to obtain proper licenses from the Westwood Board of Health. Next one, "Interior/exterior renovations or demolition require an asbestos survey to be conducted in compliance with DEP asbestos regulations, and if found, must be remediated according to DEP regulations." The site does have an asbestos survey, and the abatement will be according to DEP regulations. Comment that a detailed construction management plan shall be provided for Board of Health review detailing how any disruptions to ongoing operations related to food service and refuse removal and storage will be mitigated. In addition, a plan shall be provided detailing what steps will be taken to minimize construction-related impacts on the existing residents and staff on site through the duration of construction. And the response is, "The applicant has provided a site logistics plan showing temporary areas for trash compaction, refuse removal, truck deliveries, and resident access." Any canteen truck contracted to service the construction site should be licensed by the Board of Health. If they use a canteen contractor, they'll be required to obtain the necessary permits with the Board of Health. Swimming pool and food establishment plans shall be submitted for approval by the Westwood Board of Health. Again, the applicant will submit the appropriate plans to the Board of Health for approval. And now we get to Conservation Commission. First comment, "The plan shows a detail of the stockpile areas, but the location is not shown in the plan." Again, the stockpiles are now shown on the demolition and erosion control plan. Next comment, "A lot of the plants on the planting plan are not native." Response from the landscape architect says, "Our intent has been to establish a predominantly native, native hybrid plant palette. In response to comments, the plans have been revised to replace the proposed non-native Vinca Minor periwinkle with native Carrick's Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania sedge." And I apologize for the pronunciation.
That's okay.
Pixandra pro cummins, which is Allegheny spurge. While the majority of the proposed tree selections are native species, three non-native selections, Oleus parvivolia alley, alley lace bark elm, Vegas sylvatica, which is Dossic beech, caper mac maple, are proposed as part of the entrance planting and lower garden patio. These trees were selected specific to the locations based on their form and ornamental character and their complement, and their complement to the overall planting palette design. We would ask that these be accepted for the specific instances within the overall native planting design." And then there's a comment, "River birch is shown next to the building but prefers moist..."
You can abbreviate any of these items unless, any other...
Okay. They talked about river birch being next to the building, prefers moistest soils. They revised it instead to show three heritage river birches with red maples, a tree adapted to average, medium to wet well, wet soil conditions. They had a comment, "There's no snow storage areas." We now show the snow storage areas on the planting plan. They asked about why the, why the plans say for permit only, not intended for construction. Again, these were submitted for the permitting process and are revised all along until the contract documents to give better detail to the contractor. They asked that we revise the construction exit to be two to three inches of crushed stone instead of, I think we had one to one and a half inch. That's been revised. The erosion control detail's been revised again to the 18-inch compost sock. ZBA then responded that they reminded to, they have to go to ZBA to amend the special permit, and that will be done.
And again, you can summarize any of those also.
I think there's a couple.
Okay.
Yeah, there was, there's a question about the plan to address affordable housing, and I think that the village is still in discussions to do that. And the solar renewable energy sources. We had provided a small map of where we thought we might be able to provide that on the roof. We are asked, EverSource, to do a grid calculation to see how that might fit into their power profile, and we've contacted a solar provider, because that's really the next step, is to understand, get a solar provider onboard to see what the SMART program, which is the Massachusetts program for rebates for the solar power, what they might be able to offer, but you have to get involved with a contractor. So, we have contacted a contractor, and they will be helping us from here on out. We did add a note to the structural drawings to make sure that the building roof is designed to take that additional potential load in the future if the village so chooses to go down that path.
I think that's, that's it.
And are there any other comments from the applicant? Phil, did you want to respond to any of those or anything else to it?
So, we reviewed the submission in which you've been provided a letter, and all the comments were satisfactorily addressed or, and/or we can condition. The only one, the only mistake was the earthwork.
Yeah, okay. So, just to clarify, so that the earthwork, it is actually 6,000 cubic yards is what they're saying?
Right. I think it was labeled as cubic feet, so I just did some math.
And then, so Abby, are there any comments from staff?
No other, no comments at this time. The fire department and other staff, the fire department felt the plans addressed their concerns. The zoning board, they are waiting for this, the use, special permit application, and that's where you should submit the full affordable housing proposal at that time, and then when they get that, it'll be circulated to the planning board to review and make a recommendation on that, that requirement. So, it's about a month. The zoning board meets once a month, so the filing deadline is about a month in advance. So, you should be working on the zoning board application so then we would have time to get comments for their zoning board hearing on that. I don't have any other comments. We should just add, we'll make sure I updated in the draft list of conditions that we provided that this is also for the earth movement.
And then what else is, what else are we waiting for, for this application? Like, what are the outstanding items? So, conservation provided there...
Yep. And you filed the application with the Conservation Commission, so I let Conservation Agent know that I would send comments after tonight's meeting and look over their plans to make sure it matches your plans.
Yeah, because how close are you to any of the wetlands? What is the, where's the...
We're not that close. I mean, we have, you know, there's the 100-foot, the 35, and the 10. The existing service drive, which we're just going to pretty much, you know, just rip up and repave, that's probably on the edge of the 35, I believe, just barely, but that's about it. And then in the back, we have that rain garden, and then we have the, the stone area across the street. There's a stone portion at the very end that's just into the 35.
Okay.
But again, that's, that's for stormwater, so.
Okay. And when Karen did her review, how, it sounds like she had a number of questions, so is that considered a thorough review from her standpoint? What was, when she, obviously it has to go to the commission itself.
Right. So, the, what the applicant submitted last week were the same plans, so they're in response to her, included the responses to her initial comments as well. So, they'll...
And they meet next week?
Right, on September 11th, I think is the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. And then outside of that, there's nothing else?
There's nothing else outstanding with the EIDR, but when the special permit goes to zoning board, you should make a recommendation on their affordability component.
Okay. Okay, so at this point, I think we can start with questions and comments from the board, so we can start with you, Chris, if you want to go.
Can you remind the board what we're doing in terms of units, and then the existing Baker House and the new one?
The Clark House was 45...
I just thought Clark House, I misspoke.
Yeah, Baker's the adjacent building.
Right.
Yeah, the Clark House building was 45 units, 70 beds, so now we're going to demolish that and add 24 units.
Adding 24 total?
No.
Or coming back with 24?
Coming back with 24.
So, there's a reduction in total units. I was just curious, I wanted those numbers to see to justify or bolster why the trip generation is cut in half for each. I didn't know if it was a difference between the nursing home now being assisted living or if it's just the unit reduction.
The amount of volume, the nursing home with 100 employees, this is a big reduction with the type...
So, it's just not the, not just the residents, but the employees?
Yes, exactly, and that's, that's the most important.
Okay. That's it for me.
Dave?
I think, no, this looks very, looks like we thoroughly addressed a lot of things here, and I think my question's more for our process, Abby, with the, with the earth materials movement, so we have a set of conditions for that usually, and we've had those hearings that were like an hour and a half long, so is there anything in this application that is concerning? I mean, I guess we covered a lot of stuff through the stormwater and drainage and everything, but...
Right. I think we've covered everything. We would just, we should add, generally, we'd have a condition of where those trucks can go. In this case, we would have a condition that the truck must stay on 109 to access the site. I would imagine you'd be leaving right on 109 and hopefully going onto the highway. The location here is good. We would normally recommend a construction entrance, which they already have on their plans, and I think the draft conditions that we already have for an as-built plan and inspections, being notified of inspections, we already have in there to contact Conservation and Public Works in advance to inspect when the underground drainage is installed.
And what certification of clean fill?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we could do that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we get our standard conditions included for that, so this clean fill, where's it coming from? No trucks not going down Summer Street or the other way on 109, but you just go straight to the highway and...
You write hours of operation.
And hours of operation.
Okay. Yep.
I don't know if we already have that in there for...
Yep, no, it's not hours, hours of construction.
I think that's, that's all I have.
And then you, you had mentioned that you had started looking into solar, so what is the, do you want to throw that up on the screen? There was two different options that you were looking at now.
Yes, do you remember where they were in the submission?
Actually, in the letter.
Oh, yes, I did see them, okay.
A little diagram in the letter.
Okay. Sorry, just have to go to...
They're both on the high roof, facing the back area... They're both on the high roof, facing the back area of the building, because that's the direction we would want it to be facing. I think what we are actually looking at is combining those two options that were just two spaces that we thought would be workable for this, and that, you know, we would probably look at a total amount.
Yeah, because I think you, in your initial presentation, you did a great job talking about some of the environmental aspects of how you were going to build it and remove material and recycle. So I think it's great to hear that you're also looking into renewable energy for this.
Yeah, so those are, those are the two areas that we kind of, there's another one on the front, but that's actually, that drawing is the areas, and all the dark, that we decided not to, because those darkened areas, that's the shadow study. So you see that, you'll see that drawing, does China shows that in most of the timeframes, this, all those areas would be heavily shadowed, so that's not really prime real estate for this. But those two areas on the roof are the areas that we're targeting.
And then how many, did you do any calculations on panels? How many panels you were looking at?
I think it was 12.8 megawatts, and it was about 10% of the power.
That's great.
That's where we, where we ended up.
And what's the level of commitment that you have for this?
I think we, at this point, have to understand what the SMART program will, will give us back, and what the life cycle and the, you know, the payback period is.
Yeah.
That's the next step, so we're waiting for, I'm waiting for answers from the installers now, to understand what the total cost of the array is, and then what the program, the math is a little bit different than it used to be with the new program. So you really do need an installer involved to understand how to...
Yeah, I mean, I had them installed on my roof a year ago, and the process takes a while.
Yeah.
And even some of the, they have these, some legal steps along the way where they help you carry you through.
Yeah, it's gotten a little bit more complicated than it was a number of years ago. It's not so simple that you just, you can tell the state what the megawatts are, and then you get a check back.
Right. Now, they don't, they pay for themselves over time from...
They do.
I mean, you guys don't get, there will be no shade on them, so it seems like a no-brainer that you're considering this.
Yeah, I think it's just, it comes down to life cycle. It's, you know, how long to the panel, what's the initial outlay, and what's the, how long is that payback period?
Okay. No, I'm very happy to hear that you guys are, are going to do this. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Phil, that was a great review that you performed. Deb, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't. Great, then.
Bill?
I'm just glad to hear that you're considering renewable energy.
So at the, then any questions from the audience? Seeing none. So at this point, it seems that we have a lot of information. There are some new, new items as far as the, sort of, earth movement, so we want to make sure that we get those items in. It looks like we have some waivers.
Yep.
And is everybody at the table comfortable? Any other questions? Okay, right. So Abby, you provide us, provided us with some waivers for, for this. Does this change based on any of, any of what we've seen tonight? There's three of them, the traffic study, presentation model, and the third is from providing the plan and profiles of the streets and general map layout on one sheet.
No, I think that's, that's it, those three.
Okay. So Deb, do you want to make a motion for...
I make a motion to approve the requested waivers because they're not necessary for the review of this application for a similar use in a similar location of the previous building.
I hear a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? So that motion passes five to zero. And then there's a list of conditions that have been put together for this. It goes on for at least a page and a half. I was wondering, do we, are we able to capture some of these through the video, just for, is it, I'm just, for documentation purposes?
Yes.
Want to make sure that it's clear.
Do you want to summarize, do you want me to summarize them?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we do that? That sounds good.
Okay. So there is a list of, I think, what we have, 20, and then we'll add the earth material movement ones. So the first one was having to do with if there's any revisions to the plans during the Conservation or zoning board hearing. If minor changes could be submitted to me to make sure they're compatible with what you approved for the planning board's file. If they're major, if they change the overall appearance, alterations to traffic flow or occupancy or parking, that should return to the planning board for modification. Condition two is that the applicant's responsible for filing with the zoning board of appeals, and that should also include the specific proposal to meet the affordability requirements to provide, so that the planning board will provide comments. Three is to have the Conservation Agent and town engineer or representative from Public Works observe the soil conditions during the excavation for the rain guarding and prior to installation of the plants. The erosion and sediment controls should be acceptable to the Conservation Commission. The final signed copy of the SWIP shall be submitted to the town planner and Conservation Agent. I understand you've started submitting that, but we just want to make sure we have the final signed one after both hearings are completed. Condition number six has to do with the landscaping, that all the landscaping should be installed prior to occupancy unless it's outside of the planting season, then we'd have a condition for it to be, condition on the CO that it would be planted the next season. Condition seven is for a final as-built plan. Condition eight is the radio box and BDA from the fire department. And then the next several conditions are the Board of Health standard conditions. They've requested them. They'll also be reviewed by the Health Department when you submit to them. That's what's having to do with the swimming pool and licensing of, during the construction. And then 19 is a standard related to this approval is good for two years, to start construction within two years. And then, so we'd have the conditions 21 to add that the truck shall stay on the, access the site just from Route 9, 109, that there should be a certification submitted of where, from where that new fill is coming from, that there doesn't contain any hazardous material. And then also related to the hours of construction, which is starting at 7 a.m., not before 7:00 a.m. So we would put those 7:00 a.m., I think, to 7:00, 7:00 p.m. daily. So we'd put that in there.
And that's specific to the delivery of this, or in, for the entire?
It's for all. It's a, it's our general construction bylaw, that, from our general...
So maybe we can just move that above the earth material, just so it doesn't get confused, or at least make it state that it's for all construction.
Okay. Oh, yeah. So I think that was all of them.
Construction, is that just weekdays, or is that weekends also?
Let's see, what do we have? It's during the week, and then we do allow Saturdays. I don't, it, it's our general bylaws, so usually we cap, put in the whole bylaw in there. I forget exactly what it is.
And then Abby, is there any way for condition one, this is the, this is for any changes as a result of the zoning board, is that, or Conservation Commission? Yeah. So for those with, with minor, I mean, I would like, I want to make sure at a minimum that the board is aware of any of the communication. So how does the board know what, what has been classified as minor? Because that's a, it's a bit subjective.
Mm-hmm.
So is that done by, is, do you have an email back and forth to?
Yes. I would usually have it as be a, like a written modification in writing, explaining it, and then I would have like a administrative approval of that.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure that we, so how do we, so how will, how will you let the board know about minor, minor approvals? Because I would like to see that.
I do, anything that is the formal administrative EIDR, those are, go through the whole process. I do post those decisions on the website, but, but some things are really minor.
No, no, I'm aware of that, but I just mean like, so if they're, because it is subjective. So I just want to, I just want, I would like to know what any of those ones are, and I understand that some of them are very minor. So is there a way that you can email the board, any of these minor observations?
I try, I'm just trying to think of how I, don't forget if it's like, you know, a year later or something. I try to keep you updated on, I mean, I would, if we have anything like that, it's always documented so that it was approved.
Yeah, I mean, even a bulleted list of, at a minimum, what, what they were.
Okay. I can only think of, if I just, I just have to remember, I guess. As, you know, sometimes it says, construction goes on, if we have anything like that.
You know what we could do is just add it as a, as an agenda to the following meeting, where there are any minor, were the minor modifications?
Or, yeah. Or after, yeah, after the close of both our other hearings.
Yeah. Yeah, I would just, I would like to know what those are, just to, you know, to tie a bow on it.
Okay. I mean, sometimes we get them during construction. For example, you know, the, the underground utilities, maybe relocating a foot or so. So usually I would review those with Phil, and then I, you know, write up the approval and, and mark up a new set of plans.
Yeah. So for instance, the zoning board and the Conservation Commission, that will be well ahead of any construction, so why don't we just add that to the next planning board meeting? And it'll, it'll be a quick item, but then we can hear what they were. That'll be a good reminder.
Okay.
Does, how do these sound to everybody, the conditions? Any, any edits, any additions?
I make a suggestion that they have to post something.
Oh, yeah, just grab the mic if you're going to, sorry about that, just so folks at home can hear you.
So, I mean, the process will be, they'll have to submit something to you anyway, so if you post it and just let them, let the board know that you've posted changes?
Yeah.
But sometimes the changes are on the, the plan itself, and it's hard to know what those modifications were.
Yeah.
But I would request it from the applicant, if they have to change the plans going forward.
Okay. Yes.
So maybe you could...
Right. So the condition is that, did I have that in? The condition is that, okay, right. So we could clarify in condition one, the applicant to submit written requests summarizing any of the changes.
That sounds great.
That way, that would remind me to let you know.
That sounds great. Great idea, Phil. Thank you. And a motion for approval?
I make motion to approve the EIDR for 10 Longwood Drive from Fox Hill Village with the following conditions as presented by Abby. I'm trying to read them again.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? So the motion passed, it passes five to zero. And do we need to close the public hearing?
I'm sorry, will there be a separate vote on the earth materials movement component of this?
Oh, yeah. Did you say, we could say that in here? But yes, you could, we could, sorry, you said it too quickly, I forgot, um...
Sure.
You could, yep, do the same vote, but instead of EIDR, say earth material movement?
Same conditions?
Same motion.
Yep, with the expanded conditions, expanded standard conditions.
And we've added those.
And tonight.
So I could make a, a motion that we add to this approval, the EM, the earth materials movement review approval, along with the conditions, the standard conditions that were discussed.
Okay.
So that's my motion to...
I hear a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Can we close then, for the affordability?
Yeah, I think you can, because in the special permit for zoning board, it refers the affordability to you separately. So you can do that outside of this public hearing.
So I make motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? So the hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So next on the agenda, item number two, Westwood Estates definitive subdivision, Hedge Row Lane. Is the applicant here to present?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Johnson from Norwood Engineering, representing David Spiegel, the developer of Westwood Estates. We're here to ask the board to consider a minor modification of the conditions of approval for the subdivision. The two that we're, we're here for, we're concerned about is the vote of approval required the developer to install the sidewalk and street trees before the first occupancy permit is issued in the subdivision. It's our opinion that to construct the sidewalk and plant all of the street trees in the subdivision where there's eight additional houses to be constructed, doesn't make sense from a construction point of view. We do not have grades established for each of the house lots, so it's difficult to plant the, the street trees at an elevation that they won't be too high out of the ground or too far in the ground. And sidewalks will be damaged during construction. The other significant issue with this subdivision, and it's not really an issue, is that this is not a traditional cross-section. If the board, most of you were not on the board at the time, this is an LID subdivision, and rather than having standard vertical curb with horizontal grass strip, horizontal sidewalk, this is a LID subdivision where the drainage is handled by country drainage swales along the sides of the road. And really, the swale has to be constructed integral with the sidewalk. To put the sidewalk in now and then have to go back and construct the swale, there definitely would be significant damage to the sidewalk. So we're requesting the board to grant a minor modification, and in consideration of that, what the developer is proposing, and I think Abby has taken what we've proposed and turned that into some conditions of approval, are the following. The first 500 feet of this roadway will be done within probably the next three or four weeks. There are, there's only three houses on this section, and they're all existing houses that date back 20 years or more. So there's no activity going to be taking place on that first 500 feet. So we're proposing to plant the first 28 street trees on that section, and also plant the required plantings along the emergency access, which is completely constructed and paved, so there's no activity that would disturb those trees in the future. In addition, we'd be planting a landscaped area, which is not required, but we'd be planting a landscaped area, as you see in that relatively large area on the right side of the subdivision coming in. That would be planted as an added landscape feature. And we're suggesting that the... And we're suggesting that the street trees and sidewalk on the right side of the road would be held until lot five. Lots one, two, three, four, and five are on the right side of the road. There's an existing house on lot one, which we'd be trying to get an occupancy permit for, which precipitated this request. The completion of lots two, three, and four would trip the, the construction of the sidewalk and the street trees prior to lot five getting an occupancy permit. On the left side of the road, the street trees and drainage swales and sidewalk would be completed as lots are completed on, on that side because there is no, there is no sidewalk on the left-hand side of the road. So it's a little more easy, a little more easy to, to do that because the sidewalk is only on the right side of the road coming in. Abby has suggested that this work that we're proposing, in exchange for holding the remainder of the sidewalks and street trees be completed by mid-November, Mr. Spiegel has no problem complying with that request. In fact, the granite curbing is currently on site. The street light poles will be in, that was another condition, and we're, we're complying with that condition, that the street lights be in prior to the occupancy permit. The poles are on hand, the granite is on hand, and we certainly would commit to completing this work, as Abby has suggested, by November 15th. So that's an overview of why we're here and would hope the board would consider granting this minor modification in exchange for the scheduling that we've proposed.
Thank you. Abby, are there any comments from any staff?
The only question I had about was the streetlights.
They will be in.
So they'll all be in?
Yes.
There was three total. So at the, one's way at the end by the emergency connection, so those will be in.
The three streetlights, as they're shown on the approved definitive plan, which were approved by the safety officer in the police department.
Okay, all right. So I had drafted that as number six, but we could, uh...
Yeah, so what you had drafted was it would be put in just where the trees were, but you're saying that all of those lights will be...
Okay, so that works better if they're, if they can be in.
Yeah, all of, all of the lights will be in. There are two houses completed, one on lot one and one on lot nine. Mr. Spiegel also purchased one of the lots that was existing at 22 Hedge Row. So there are three houses out there right now. Two within the subdivision proper and one that was outside the subdivision, but was on the old Hedge Row.
So you just went through a lot of information. I, I lost part of what you were saying after you were talking about the, what, an additional item was the landscaping?
Yes.
On the right-hand side as you're coming in. So how will that be landscaped? Will that be trees or shrubs?
Well, we're going to submit, we'll submit to Abby, as we did in the past, a complete landscaping plan prepared by a landscape architect. We did submit, as part of the definitive plan, landscaping plans by a landscape architect, which Abby reviewed it at, at her level. And we'll do the same for that section.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to know if it's, especially trees versus shrubs.
No, it'd be a combination.
Combination.
And we're also talking about having a, maybe a three-foot-high entrance wall with the subdivision in it as a feature sign.
Okay. And then, so, we have the map up now. So where are the, you said that there's a house constructed on lot one and five? Do you mind shifting that all?
Lot one and lot nine.
Yep.
One and nine. So that's...
Here and here, and this is where the existing house is. So these two are in construction.
And we're proposing to do this work up to the driveway on lot one. Sidewalk, trees, drainage.
On both sides?
Lom and seed, both sides.
So right up until that fence, basically? The new fence that was put in, the green one?
Yes.
Where that ends?
Along Mr. Box's property, yes.
So we have, this is going in. This is the emergency access area in the back. That goes out towards Lyons Drive. So there's going to be landscaping planted around, around there too. This is, that's the cul-de-sac at the end you see. It's kind of in the middle of the road. This is the lot nine, lot nine house.
That's where the existing old house was, that was demolished.
This is connecting up to Lyons Drive.
Did you say you're proposing to have the street, the sidewalks and the trees in by November?
From Canton Street to the driveway on lot one. It's 28 trees, 500, approximately 500 feet of sidewalk and the country drainage.
And when you...
And side slopes, side areas loaned and seeded. Basically finished, other than the top coat of pavement.
When will the entire, all the sidewalk be done?
Well, under, under the proposal and Abby's conditions, the remainder of the sidewalk on the right side of the road would be phased based upon the rate at which houses are built. So the right side of the road, the sidewalk and trees would not be built until lots two, three, and four are built on. And lot five will be held occupancy until that work is done.
So lot five, is that the last?
It's the last house on the right side.
I'm curious.
Is there a timetable?
Yeah, do you have a sense of when?
It all depends on the market.
On the market, yeah. When they sell the lots.
It's a market-driven business.
So this all seems, I mean, it seems very reasonable. And since we've been reviewing this for like, three or four years, I'm wondering, you know, what changed? Like, wouldn't this have been a reasonable plan to propose from the beginning? Like, were we thinking they'd be able to do all the sidewalks and trees and everything?
Well, we would have proposed it, but it was a condition the planning board placed on the approval. This was not something we proposed to do all the street trees and the sidewalk. It was a condition of approval placed by the planning board. And I don't know how much background you know in the subdivision, but for almost two years, it was tied up with jockeying with the abutters, getting the town meeting to abandon its rights in the old Hedge Row Lane. All of that had been resolved. The town has abandoned the rights. I believe the old Hedge Row Lane has been removed, the pavement. The driveways to the abutting lots, at least one of the two has been paved. So things have started to pick up. For the last two years, we were not being able to get building permits until the abutters issue was resolved and the town abandoned its rights in the old Hedge Row Lane. That's all behind us and now we're, we're in a position where the activity is back and we just don't want to plant trees and build sidewalks and have to replant them and rebuild them because we're not, basically not ready to. It's, it's a construction sequencing that doesn't make sense when you've got to get back on a lot, grade them, bring material in, and essentially drive over the sidewalks and not know where to plant the trees in terms of their elevation until the site is graded.
I mean, I guess, I wasn't on the board at the time, but my guess would be that this condition was put in so that as, as houses are built, that the, the folks that are purchasing those houses have an, have a, an aesthetically pleasing-looking street that they live on. This is contingency, as you said, on, on market. So my concern here would be if the market goes down and housing takes a little bit of a dip, then we're going to be staring at this for a long time. And we just went through this up on 109 where there was a development where it was aesthetically unpleasing and there were pains to the neighbors that were living there. So I'm, I wasn't on the board at the time. I have a, a tough time going back on decisions that I made on other boards because there's a lot of discussions that occur during those meetings. It seems to me that that would be one of those, just discussions back and forth regarding the development, development itself. And I think on this, there's a sidewalk on just one side.
That's correct.
So that would be my concern is, I've driven down this road and it, it does seem not complete. So I would think that if these houses aren't sold, and it's, you said it's contingent upon the, the last lot sold? You would do the sidewalks, one would be the...
On the right side, it would be when lot five is sold, is, is requesting a certificate of compliance. Only on the right side.
So if lot five is sold tomorrow and two, three, and four are not, you would, we would, that would trigger the sidewalk completion? That's what you're proposing? So if I, if I remember right, I was on the board when this was approved. At the time, the board was fairly sensitive, hypersensitive perhaps, to the issue of sidewalks within subdivisions. And it was in anticipation of having the subdivision look complete and finished. And I think the board probably did forget to consider building sequences. Because the applicant is correct, a lot of what gets put in right now will have to be torn up. It's just a condition of, it, it just happens. It's, it's almost unavoidable. So it, it would be somewhat of a hardship, I think, to require them to put this in right now, only to have to rip it all up, a financial hardship. But Abby, we, do we have money in escrow for this aspect of the build?
Yes, so...
The thing I was going to add is that there is money posted to secure all this work.
Right, so...
And it's a sufficient amount, determined to be?
Yes, there's, um...
There'll be time for public, yeah. Yeah, though, I will allow you to speak later.
There, we have almost, I think it's around almost $700,000 held for all the remaining work. But both Brian and Chris are correct that there was a, the condition was, it was a little bit unclear on construction sequencing, but it did, the intent was to have a time period for the trees and, and the sidewalks and the streetlights. Because we were concerned, in the past subdivisions, you know, this work is covered in the bond that you're, you're holding. But oftentimes, we've seen in the past, they don't get planted to the very end of the last house. So this, those conditions, the intent was to try to give a timeline of at what stage, once people start living there, how far along they'll go. But we didn't get too specific on how that'll actually work out in terms of construction. So that's why we had tied those two, I think the exact wording was, completed at the time of the binder course of the road in the occupancy of the first house.
I think the big thing is we just want to make sure that it gets done and that's like what has driven a lot of the conditions we've had on other projects too, where like, I know we spent a lot of time with the construction sequencing of the condos at University Station to the point of we want to make sure that it wasn't possible to kind of just do one and then walk away or something. And the same things we observed at that other place across town where we didn't have protections in place. And so, so here, I think the bond or the, you know, the money in escrow, it, it answers that. And then it's, as long as we have enough assurance there that it'll be a complete, you know, have a complete sidewalk that was intended. I just don't want to have, have somebody come back at some point and say, "Well now, you know, actually it's, we don't really need it down there." Because I hate to see the situations in town where we have these sidewalks to nowhere or, you know, it's kind of, my street's like that. It has a sidewalk a short distance and then it's never going to get extended. And, you know, that's, so I think that, I think the balancing interests here, it's, it's reasonable to do this as long as we have the financial escrow.
Something that just, so, sorry to interrupt, but, so if, if number five is sold tomorrow, that triggers it. What if two, three, and four are sold tomorrow, but five goes three years without being sold? Is your proposal taking that into consideration?
Five would be the trigger. Or any other combination that the board might want to consider.
I think we have to consider that too.
Yep.
That may be the most desirable, that may be the least desirable, I don't know.
The other thing I'll add is that in terms of having the development look more aesthetic, that's why we're proposing the 28 trees for the first 500 feet and getting the first, the subdivision's 1,100 feet long. So we're talking about getting the first 500 feet pretty much done. Sidewalk, loam and seed, street trees, drainage, everything but the top coat. So that'll get about half, slightly less than half of the subdivision completed. So that should address some of the concerns that the board might have about aesthetics out there.
And did we address the end of, at the cul-de-sac, sort of the shielding so that, for the access road and everything?
Yes, we have an approved, we have an approved landscaping plan for the access.
What I mean is to make sure that, you know, that part is, whatever, that the screening and all at the end of the road is, is done sooner than later.
We're proposing that by November 15th as well. And, and that is bonded as well.
It's just a signage restriction, there's no gate.
In signage, yep. There is a requirement to have the, the sign that says emergency access only.
And there's a curb there as well, to make it not obvious, or make it obvious.
There's a slope.
Yeah, we can be complying with all the other conditions of approval prior to the first certificate of compliance. It's really the land, the street trees and the sidewalk. And as I said at the outset, this, you're going to run into this in other subdivisions if you're doing country drainage. In order to, to create that swale, it's very difficult to construct a sidewalk and a street tree and do the sloping required to get that swale. It's unlike a, a standard subdivision where you've got a road, a grass strip, and a sidewalk. We're now looking at a road, a swale, a bottom, back up, then a sidewalk. And in order to construct that, and also at every driveway, we have a crossing consisting of pipe with head walls on either end that play into that as well. So the sidewalk goes across that pipe. Pipe crossing for each driveway. So now, in order to construct the driveway, you've got to tear up the pipe. In order to construct the sidewalk, you've got to make sure that all those pipes are in. And so it's, it's a little different situation than a, a standard subdivision cross-section. And that's really a big part of this request. Besides all of the other construction sequencing issues.
You're bringing up the, the driveway and it reminds me of another issue we've had in the past with the board, and that is driveways that cross over sidewalks. It's become fashionable to outfit the end of your driveway, the apron, with cobblestones. And it creates a problem with sidewalks, anyone in wheelchair access or something. So I don't know, in the decision, did the board identify that potential? In this particular case, it, it also seems a little odd if you restricted one side of the road from doing it, but the other side could because there's no, there's no sidewalks to interfere with. But it would be, I think visually, somewhat off-putting to, to do that. But I'm, to your recollection, do you, I mean, without going back to the decision?
No.
There was no proposal for that, unless anything's changed, but...
There's no proposal and there's no condition.
Okay. And it could also sometimes be triggered just by the homeowner. You know, after it's sold and then it, then it basically disrupts the sidewalk, sidewalk.
I can pass that on to Mr. Spiegel that, that if somebody requests that, that it's not...
I believe it's been the stance of this board, not this sitting board, but in the past when they've heard it, that the driveway remain consistent with, or the sidewalk remain consistent throughout so that those people in wheelchairs and such can get a consistent grade.
I will pass that on.
So Abby, you said that there was money in escrow. So at what point does that get triggered to complete this project? What, what month and year are we talking about?
And it's there until the applicant requests a reduction or a release. It's a tri-party agreement.
But it sounds like, will that money be used? I'm wondering, is the intention of that escrow to complete the aesthetics? Because you can see the pictures of what it currently stands, and it's, to me, it's not that pleasing. I mean, I don't think I would buy Lot 4 and live there staring across at what is there today. So at what point are those monies used to complete that sidewalk work that we're talking about?
It's used in the event the developer were to not complete the subdivision, so it's not...
So there's no time, there's no year, no month?
No.
Six years from now, Lot 5 hasn't sold, you still don't get completion of the sidewalks.
Right. I mean, sometimes they do take years. Usually, a developer might ask for a reduction as the construction work progresses, and that's when we review it each time. We give a staff report, and the planning board may reduce it and look at the work that is yet to be done and the work that has been done.
These houses being...
The monies are only released when the work is completed, and Phil writes a letter saying that the work's been completed, and the monies can be released. So for example, the granite curbing is going in, once the granite curbing is in and determined to be installed properly, we can come back and ask for that portion of the bond to be released. If memory serves me, I think the board is holding about $1,100 per tree in bond.
You think the issue is the, when can you use that? So it doesn't sound like any of that was time-bound like we have on other applications that we've looked at.
Well, we're not dependent on drawing that down. Mr. Spiegel has funds to...
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the amount, I'm talking about when.
Getting it done.
When.
It seems to me, if the applicant is requesting Lot 5 be the trigger, I understand that because it's the farthest away. Unless I'm missing something, a counter from this board could be, if Lots 2, 3, and 4 are sold, that's the trigger. Or if Lots 5 singly is sold, that's the trigger. Or we then come up with four years, a total cap. If Lots only 3 and 4 are sold, and it doesn't qualify either of those triggers, but four years has lapsed, then they have to put it in because they haven't done their job selling. If Lots 2, 3, and 4 are sold, they have to do Lot 5 as well, and when they build Lot 5, they're gonna have to rebuild it again. That's on them. If we're looking for triggers, it's obviously down the right side, Lots 2, 3, and 4. They're proposing just Lot 5. I think this board could counter with, okay, in addition to that, maybe also if Lots 2, 3, and 4 are sold, that's our trigger, Lot 5 is your trigger, or total four years will go without a sidewalk, or three years, or two years, whatever we decide. But I think that's what we're looking for, is a time trigger. We have the money, it's just a matter of, when are we gonna step in? When is the town gonna step in and say, we want this thing built?
What is your...
We would accept a time trigger.
Wait, let me, Deb has been trying to talk for a little...
I just was curious, how many of these houses are being built to order? Are they, are you just building them, or are people designing them?
Well, right now, the two that are up are speculative homes to get things going. The lots are being sold for custom homes.
So they could be there for a long time.
Just these were, the three houses that are there were speculative homes to get the development jump started.
So what are the lots, were those two specs, where are they? Which lot numbers?
They're on 1 and 9.
1 and 9. It's where the houses are already built.
Yeah, so they're not even sold yet.
1 and 9.
Are they sold? Are either sold?
I believe that 1 is in the negotiation for purchase and sales. I believe that 22 Hedgerow, which was a lot that was outside the subdivision that Mr. Spiegel purchased and demolished, I believe that is in some stage of negotiation.
So the first one on the left and first one on the right, you believe they're discussing, but Lot 9 has not, no...
Not that I'm aware of.
Interest to the point of offers.
So the impact, basically, you can't, if you can't get the occupancy, you can't sell Lot 1 until, unless we change this, unless we make this modification. What would be the impact if we said, if we just stuck to the original and said, why don't you just finish the whole subdivision first? Would there be a, what would be your option there? I don't like the idea of just throwing down a sidewalk with no houses and then have damage to it, but, I mean, why not just do the whole project and then be all upset?
It's costly to install something to service, basically at this point, to service one house and have the trees damaged and have to replant them. I mean, in terms of aesthetics, dead trees don't look any better than no trees.
But I mean, like, build the entire, build the houses and complete the entire subdivision before occupancy of the first unit, essentially, if that's what it takes to...
You're saying build the whole development on spec?
It's just...
I don't think that's their MO.
Because it gets back to kind of why we had this condition in the first place, I think, was we wanted to make sure that it was substantially complete and that it didn't turn into a kind of build-as-you-go project.
But, so if they do construct it, then they literally have just the driveway access to get onto the property. The trucks can't deliver across, there's a swale, there's trees planted in the front yard. They will get destroyed. They will not last. It will look, it will look bad. I believe this was an oversight, to some extent, by the planning board three years ago.
I would like to hear from the neighbor, because he might, you might be able to give us some information. Were you in attendance at the previous hearings?
Oh, yeah, I just listened to the whole...
So I've given a limit of two minutes.
Alright, I just got one point, legal point.
Yeah, and I just wanna make sure it doesn't turn into a ten-minute...
Identify yourself, please.
I'm gonna be civil.
No, and if you need a little bit more time, then just ask for time.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I'm just curious why it didn't schedule a public hearing? Because there's been precedent set before Thompson Avenue, there was a tree issue, and you had a public hearing. When they changed the lots on Hedgerow, you had a public hearing. This is a lot more detailed, as we just, you know, you've been discussing it now for like 25 minutes, it's a lot more detailed. And I think it should be a public hearing. None of the abutters got notified.
Yeah.
I just happened to see it, because I subscribe and get the planning board updates. So I think the abutters should get notified because the abutters are looking at the agreement and the conditions that you guys, previous board, set. And it says this, 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 and this. And now, they're gonna say, what happened? Because they didn't get notified. So that's just, I think there should be a public hearing. But if there's not a public hearing, I just have a few points that I wanna make because the applicant made points. First of all, this was approved November 1st, 2016. It'll be almost three years coming up. I mean, Hillary Clinton was still a candidate at that time, in the favor, I guess. But that's over 1,000 days that they've had now. Obviously, there were some issues back and forth, everything like that, but they put the binder coat down probably in, I would say, March or April, possibly. Now, everyone's saying, yeah, put the sidewalks in later and everything like that. But I've done research, and your board's rules and regulations, 5.8.10, sidewalks shall be installed with the binder course when the roadway's binder course is laid. So the sidewalks, binder course of the sidewalk is supposed to be put down when the binder course of the road is put down. That wasn't done in this particular case. Going on to 5.10.6, required street trees and other landscaping must be planted at the time the road's binder course is laid, unless another timeframe is approved by the planning board. The conditions were set that it should be, the conditions in the agreement that everyone agreed to, the planning board said the trees would be put down when the binder course was put down. And then, one final one, it has to do with, sorry, had a spinal cord injury about a year ago, so...
No, no, take your time, you're fine.
Streetlights shall be installed at the same time as the binder course. So all three should have been put down when the binder course was put down. Now, the decision is here. This is the decision that the planning board agreed upon. Some of the things have not been, as I've just pointed out, I mean, it's right in this that the sidewalk shall be installed when the binder course is put down. That's condition number four. Condition number 20, three streetlights should be put down in front of Lot 1, 3, and 5. The light shall be installed at the time the roadway binder course is laid. And the same thing applies to, well, the other thing I just would want a little bit clarification, this is going a little bit off...
That's fine, just so one more point.
Yeah, the clarification of what consist of the earth-moving trucks? Because there have been cement mixes come up Everett Street, cross over Canton Street, and go down to the project. And they didn't know whether the earth-moving was considered, you know, the big, big trucks, or whether all trucks were considered that? Because obviously, the trucks are coming from the plant out in Medfield.
No, that's fine.
And they come right down 109, they come down Everett Street, and just make it there. So...
No, I just have one other question for you. So when, during those hearings, because we're just trying to piece back the history of this, was for the abutters, was this, was this one of those items that made you please? So where do you live exactly?
I'm at 485 Canton. I abut Lot 1.
Yeah.
And, I mean, to be honest, the only thing that I see, what I see and what I fear is what I think some of the members of the board fear, that, first of all, nothing's been done according to what was agreed to before. So, you know, what's saying, any agreement you make now is gonna be abided by. You can see the conditions here were not abided by. The binder course was put down, and they said, oh, we'll just let this go.
Sure.
So the board is, I mean, it's like a paper tiger, because it's like, you know, the credibility of the board is at stake, because it's like, oh, well, let's do whatever we want. Now they're coming in and they're saying, well, we have money concerns, we wanna do this, we don't wanna destroy this. That's not the case. I mean, you gotta look through, read between the lines. They wanna sell Lot 1, and the condition is they can't sell Lot 1 until these conditions are met. So they're eager to sell Lot 1, but they don't wanna complete the project that they agreed to before. So I say, put the sidewalks down, they should have been put down with the binder coat, put them down. Whether you wanna put the trees in or not, okay, I'd agree, you know, leave the trees if you want, because obviously, to put trees in to take them out, okay, I'll agree on the trees, even though I shouldn't, or even though the board probably shouldn't, but put the, you know, take the trees off. But at least get the sidewalks in, because if you don't get the sidewalks in, you're gonna have a development that's gonna have a sidewalk going to, not even, and I don't eat, and I think I know why, but Lot 1, if they sell Lot 1, there's not gonna be a sidewalk in front of Lot 1. Why is that? You're not gonna destroy it anymore. The construction is all done on Lot 1. So they should go up to the end of Lot 1, not the beginning of Lot 1. Doesn't make any sense. The only reason I thought that they were trying to avoid...
We have limited time, so any other...
No, the only reason I thought they were gonna try to avoid that is to avoid putting the light in. But, you know, I just hope the board takes everything into consideration, because the board spent over a year going through all the conditions, making sure everything was done the right way. And I don't think they, that the previous board should just be ignored because they put a lot of time and effort into it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Abby, do you wanna respond to any of these?
Sure.
So the...
Yes, so this, the applicant has come to you for these reasons. This is a request for a minor modification. This is not a public hearing. If you decide it's not minor, it can go, that would be your decision, then it would trigger a full modification of the approval, which is a public hearing. However, in reference to another subdivision, we did have a public hearing on, theirs wasn't related to the timing. That request at another subdivision in town, that was to not plant the trees at the end of the subdivision. So the applicant's here not requesting that they not do these things, but it's to, they're requesting the exact timing of these items.
And then what about the item with the binder, the binder code?
So these, this is what the applicant is working on now. They have been following the plans, and I did talk to the project engineer and the developer over the summer about coming to you to specify the timing. So this subdivision was submitted in, early in 2016, under the old regulations, but we did, we use that same language that's in the subdivisions in these conditions. So what the abutter had described, those are conditions, and that's why the applicant's here tonight. So that's what, tonight you're considering. You're holding the tri-party agreement, that's to ensure all the roadway and infrastructure work is completed. So you're holding that. What you're reviewing tonight is the specification of the timing of when you wanna see these items completed. So that's for you to determine, you know, tonight, you can make that clear in your review.
Okay, thank you. And do you have anything else to say? You're all completed.
Yep.
I wanted to include that, yes, sure.
Do you know, off the top of your head, Abby, was the requirement in the subdivision regulations to complete the sidewalk and trees at the time of binder, was that in the old regulations, or was that added as part of the new? Because we were under the old.
It was only added in the new, so this was not in the old subdivisions. So this was something, during these public hearings, this was a new condition that the planning board had added. So this is the first time this has really come up. They filed under the old regulations, but at that time, we were working on updating your regulations.
I think that's probably why the planning board put that condition in, is because they were working on it, but it wasn't officially adopted in the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, I think part of that is speculative, like there's a lot of reasons why this could have been done. And that's why I'm having a challenge with this tonight, is that the previous board put a lot of time and effort into this. And I understand that some of the sidewalks may be damaged during this. But we, my bigger issue is the fact that we just saw a project that was incomplete, and people were upset, neighbors were upset. And you have two spec houses going in that are diagonal, so how is this, how are these gonna be sold? It's based on economics, so this could sit here for however long it takes. I agree with Chris as far as, like, there's different ways that you could carve it out, like at what point do you start finishing the work? Now you have it as finishing it by 5. If 5 is done, then you have 2, 3, and 4. But I find it challenging to link those together, too. So I'm sort of at, I'm in a, I'm still trying to wrap my head around it.
I'd suggest, as Chris said, was to establish a time period whether the houses sell or not.
Abby, can you remind the board, who is the peer review?
Um...
Was it Beta?
Yes.
Or you? I have, I know, I remember that time period, that's why I've wanted to make sure who it was. Phil, can you speak to the difference between this sidewalk and the drainage? And does this take place anywhere else in town that you're aware of? Where are we using this drainage system in the sidewalk design?
I don't believe it's anywhere else in Westwood.
So can you describe for the board exactly what you'd be seeing from the curb towards the house?
So there's gonna be, there'll be, the curb will be flush, it won't be...
Raised.
Be up.
Right.
So that the water can sheet flow off the roadway into the swale, and then, you know, across, and it'll be a grass swale.
How deep is the swale?
Uh...
Do you recall?
Two feet.
So it'll drop two feet from the curb to the, and then back up to the sidewalk?
The two feet.
I know you just handed this out.
So, just to interrupt for a second, the top sheet is a standard subdivision, conventional subdivision. You can see, as it described, you've got the road, the grass strip, and the sidewalk, all in one plane. If you go to page 2, which is the LID, and I think this was the first one approved, and I think it's the only one approved today, you can see on the cross-section, where you've got the curb is actually an invisible curb, it's there only to hold the pavement in place. Then there's a stone diagram... Then there's a stone diagram, like a drip edge, then there's a three to one, four to one slope down, there's a two-foot wide stone trench at the bottom, and then it comes back up to meet the sidewalk.
And that swale is grass?
Yes.
On either side of the stone trench?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, there's, there's grass over the, over the trench as well.
Okay, so you don't see the, the stone?
So if you would install the sidewalk and then have to come back and install the trench, you can see the amount of damage you would do to a sidewalk in order to construct that.
And the sidewalk is concrete or asphalt? What did we say?
Asphalt.
Okay. Oh, that's right, sorry.
So this is the same drainage system that was approved back in 2016?
Yes.
And you accepted the condition?
I mean.
And you accepted the conditions even under this?
We designed it that way.
Well, what I'm saying is you accepted the conditions of.
The timing.
The timing of the sidewalks and everything back then.
Yeah. It would have required an appeal of the approval, which didn't make sense to appeal approval of those two things.
So my apologies, can you reiterate if you did say it, I lost it? How, the bottom of the swale, what's the difference between that and the top of the sidewalk and the top of the road? How, what is that trench depth?
It varies, it's two feet. I can't hear you.
Oh, you need to go to the microphone, sir, I'm sorry.
I think it varies with the, with the grade of the road and the adjacent lots, probably in the.
I don't see the mention here.
Two, two feet.
Two feet down? Over how many feet? Six feet?
Um.
From the curb to the edge of the sidewalk is how long? The LID area, how long is that?
It's, let's see, two to one slope, plus the bottom is two feet, so it's probably about, probably about six feet.
So, as I understand how this has all played out, yeah, it, to me, it looks like it's about six feet. If the sidewalk is five, it's a little bit wider than that. It's eight feet? Okay. I understand this condition was put on you, the applicant. I think the planning board should have recognized the sequence, but more importantly, the applicant probably should, since you're the one building it, should have identified, wait, that might be a problem. I think your trigger of just number five only is a little unreasonable from the town's perspective. I think it puts us a little out there, dangling too much. I'd like a little more safeguard from our perspective. But, that being said, I believe that this project will proceed better if we give them a timeline, that this has to be done, instead of making them put in this ditch that is going to make it really difficult to build the house and landscape the lawn where their only access point will be the driveway. Many material trucks come on, they're too big to make a turn into just a driveway. It will get damaged. The trucks carrying lumber up to 15 feet long sometimes are quite long, and they need to get up, up to the house area to deliver whatever it is they're delivering. I, I think this was a mistake by both the applicant and the planning board, that it was over, the, and I think the fact that it was the first time approved in town. The planning board really didn't have that much understanding of this building sequence at the time. So I, I think, I, I get it, we could hold his feet to the fire and say, do it this way. I, I think this is a time where the planning board can be reasonable and work with the builder to come up with a good solution to this problem that we're presented with. I don't think we have to strong arm in this particular case. We're not asking them to change what they're going to build, we're just asking them, and we're complying or we're responding to their request on the timing of what it, when it's going to be built. That's my, my feeling on this. I think we can work with them on this particular problem. I don't want to change what's been approved, I want the development to go on and be built what was approved, but I think the sequence of, of this can be altered so that we get a good project.
Here's my concern, though, to be a ma, a major modification, the overall appearance has to change. We don't know how long this will remain though, in unfinished state.
Right, but that's, the, the major is changing the finished product, they're not asking to change the finished product, they're asking for the timeline. And we can impose that timeline. We did first, and now we see that there's a problem with that. I don't have a problem saying, all right, you got 12 months to get your act together and do this. These things, the sidewalk, the, the trees, the light posts, whatever, we want to impose, we could say six months. I think we have to recognize, the planning board dropped the ball a little bit, and the applicant really dropped the ball because they agreed to something that they don't want to do. But our job is not to be the parent here, it's to get this thing done in the right way. The, the development's going to be built, it's just a matter of, does the board agree that it's an undue burden we're putting on realizing exactly how this is going to play out?
Okay, Bill, you have a question?
Yeah. Why this type of drainage? Is it the, is this the only solution?
This was the.
I'll let you answer.
Since you designed it.
So, back in, I don't know, 2014, 2015, so we were, we were working with the town to, to develop subdivisions, low-impact development subdivisions, and as well as other aspects for, so we were going through all the, all the town codes at the time, and concurrent with developing the stormwater management program, we also went through the subdivision regulations. And this was a, this was a, a section that we developed. It wasn't even approved when, when the first, when the application first came in, but we were working with it and we wanted to, and the applicant was amenable to installing what we were, what we were designing, so.
So is this the only type of drainage that you could have, or say, could we look at something, another way of?
So if you look at your subdivision regulations, there are, there are a number of options based on, you, you, you don't necessarily want to do a, a low-impact development subdivision if the soils aren't amenable for it, if the site isn't ready for it. So what we, what we realized when we were reviewing this project was that this is a good candidate for this, this type of project.
And changing that now, at this point, would be a major modification, wouldn't it?
Yes, yes.
And, and the infrastructure isn't there.
And in the long run, it's gonna, it's gonna work, it's gonna work fine. It's, it's just a matter of, you know, a lot of what Chris said is true about, but also Brian, you know, pointed out the fact that maybe you should extend the limit to the end of lot one and the end of lot nine. Right now, you know, I mean, you could leave the, the swale out, but put the trees in, in front of lot 10, but, you know, I mean, that would get you a little further.
Can you go back to the, the one where it shows everything?
And then you, and then you, like, like, was, was stated that.
Where it shows all the lots.
In the back end as well, so you've got both ends that, I want to say that the abutters are going to see.
I have two pages because it's too long. Right. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, because you're building on one and nine.
Those are already built though, right?
Yeah, houses are constructed.
And then the, currently your, the proposal before us, was they're gonna end at what?
Going.
Just before lot one?
Yep, before lot one and up to, what was it, up to lot nine? It was at Station 500, yeah, so up to lot 10 and up to lot one.
So why would, why wouldn't you go beyond one? If you want to grab the mic. It's already built.
We, we proposed to bring it to the driveway because if somebody is going to be using the sidewalk, at this point, the logical destination would be Canton Street. So if they came out of their house, went down the driveway, they'd be on the sidewalk. If you extended another 100 feet on the, on the frontage, it's a sidewalk to nowhere. So we felt that doing it all from, from the break at the, at the driveway to the end was a logical place to break the sidewalk, and to extend it 100, 100 feet at this point wouldn't be used. In answer to this gentleman's question, as I remember, Chris, you might remember, I think we were asked by the planning board to look at this LID. It was not something we came up with on our own, I think.
I don't remember the impetus behind it.
Right, yes.
Was it the planning board going through the rules and regs?
So I think we, we need to come to some type of consensus or continue this hearing because we're, it's getting late in the evening, we have our other items. As far, if for a time limitation, the other thing too is I've seen, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want the time to just be kicked down the road every time also where they keep coming back for another six months, another, so what is, Deb, Bill?
I'd say continue.
My feeling is that the timing, when we've imposed these conditions to these projects now, the timing is a critical element of that. And all, it may not be material to the overall appearance of the project and everything, it's a material element of our, of our decision. And so I don't believe that this is a minor modification. I think this is a, it's a change that needs a, a more thorough review.
I'd like to hear from the abutters too.
Great.
Yeah, it doesn't seem honored to me. Yeah, so I just want to make sure, I didn't, I acknowledge you, but I wanted to, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? And again, do you have anything else to say? You're all set. And again, this is.
Have we named his name? He didn't identify.
Yeah, it's David Conole, C O N O L E, 485 Canton Street. I think I heard three people say it's not a minor modification, so that kind of triggers public hearing. I would just say, why don't we just schedule a public hearing, abutters get notified, and then might even be more consensus with some of the abutters in here as well, once they get notified. And one final, just one final thing, Mr. Johnson was present at November 1st, 2016, and a couple of things that were mentioned, soils test for drainage basins performed on 10/20/16 and found sandy soils, no issues were found, infiltration basin adjusted to provide emergency overflow spillway 10 feet access provided, drawdown provided, all issues resolved. So, you know, it seems like everything was going hunky-dory before they had to do the work, and then once they have to do the work, then it's like, you know, some of these things pop up. So I just think if we had a public hearing, it, you know, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to respond very quickly. He indicated about not doing the work. Our position is, if the board votes not to allow a minor modification, the work is going to continue. That's all I can say. It's not a matter of we haven't done our job, or we're not trying to do the job, we're just trying to do the job in, in, in the best possible manner and sequence, not to avoid having to do anything. And that's all I'll say.
Great, thank you very much. Any other final comments from the board?
No.
So we have a, the first motion is with regards to whether or not this is considered a minor modification. Or can it just be a motion that it's major?
Right, you could do that. But that's your first determination is if it's minor or not, so.
You have to rule on, because that's what they're requesting, a minor modification.
Yeah. So as the applicant said, so if you decide that it's not minor, the applicant can proceed according to the approval or come back with a formal modification in public hearing to do something different.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to determine that this is not a minor modification.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? So that motion passes four to one, so that is considered not a minor modification.
Right, so essentially it's, this request is not approved.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
And thank you for coming. Next on the agenda is a follow-up of the August zoning amendment discussion. So Abby, if you want to give us a quick summary, essentially the.
Sure. Yes.
Selectment had a meeting, and who was in attendance?
Um.
Did anybody present to them or was it?
No, I did submit your request for the four zoning articles that you talked about at the last meeting. That was provided to them, but last week the select board did meet and decided not to hold a fall town meeting.
Okay.
So essentially the next, we always have an annual town meeting, so that'll be in May. Usually, um.
January.
Usually the warrant closes in early January, so we would want to review together as a group, at least submit your warrant request, usually your December meeting. Then we usually have your, after the warrant closes, your public hearing is usually the second February, meeting in February, and then goes through the public hearing process until town meeting in May.
Any comments from the board with regards to that?
So we were the only one that had articles?
That's probably now, okay.
Oh, just grab the mic, oh, is that okay?
Grab your mic, do you want one?
All right, take your time.
We can bring it to you, the last one who wants to speak, probably.
Mr. Chairman, Pat O'Hearn, Town Council, I was at that meeting. You were the only people who produced warrant articles, there were four. Given the cost of what a town meeting costs, and given other aspects, the board is likely to vote not to hold a fall town meeting.
Okay. Good, thank you for coming tonight, too.
My pleasure.
All right, great. Any other comments or all set to move forward? Okay, great. So moving on, so we have other business items. So first on the list is the comprehensive plan update. So the, the process continues, which is great, there's some, some good work being done.
So all the teams, there's the teams of the two steering committee members and the planning board liaisons, they've all met in the end of July through last week, so each have met, they're working on drafts. Their homework assignment is to start writing their, start writing a draft to circulate with their, in groups with you, and then they have set the next steering committee for September 25th. So their goal is trying to get, at least pulling together the work with an update.
So it's a Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday night, so this will be the first time the full steering committee has met since the vision session. So they're trying to pull all the information that they've gained so far from any, any interviews from the survey and from the vision session, and kind of at least try to get that on, on paper, so that they'll meet in September and see where they all are and see at what stage, because we'd like to have them start coming to planning board meetings. But we've got to see where everyone is. So they were meeting, kind of compiling information, now they're trying to pull drafts together.
Great, thank you. Any comments from the board? Okay, great. Oh, do you? Okay. Next on the agenda is, so planning board budget review. So thank you for providing that information. I did have a chance to take a look at the, I guess annually there's a submissions to, is that a town meeting or is it just an annual review to?
It's, it's through town meeting, that's really what you're approving at town meeting, the bulk of annual town meeting is the budget. So that process, usually each town department, each division starts, we submit it in November to get through the warrant and the select board and finance and warrant commission, it goes through that process all the way through town meeting in, in May.
Okay. Yeah, because I do think it's our, it's our responsibility to, to take a look at what, what's included in that. So I think there were essentially like seven or eight items within the budget, including printing, there's a training item, so I think, and when is the, when do the requests need to be in for the next budget cycle? Is it October, November?
Usually like November.
And you can probably hold on to the, the mic, so if I do. And you can probably hold on to the mic, so if I do acknowledge you. Okay.
So we've already had a presentation at department head meeting that the budget process is, will be starting probably the end of October, early November.
Okay.
So you need to start thinking about what you want for next year in terms of what you don't have right now that you think you need to augment your budget.
Sure.
If you think about it logically, we're now in the final month of the first quarter, so that budget's, the doors of the barn are open and the cows are out in the pasture. So it's hard to go back and change that now, but there's some room if you have something you desperately need that you can work through, and I encourage you to work through Abby and Nora to do that.
Yeah, so any requests in the future, when is the deadline for that?
I'd start talking to Nora about it right now, you know, start thinking about what you want for next year's budget. And it may not go through your budget, it may go through others, like if you want some technological updates, you've got to get Donna McClellan involved, or Nora should get Donna, or Abby should get Donna McClellan involved.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Pat.
I'll tell you how we got into this, basically. I went to a class put on by the state, by the office of the inspector general, and they said boards should take a look at their budgets.
If you think about it logically, everybody in town should look at the town budget.
That's exactly right. Not just this board, I'm talking to all boards. It's our responsibility, it's our fiduciary responsibility to do this, this is what we should do.
It is.
And we should also make our presentations for our needs, not our wants necessarily, but what we need, such as each person here should have a laptop, because the inspector general says, if you're using your own laptop, you're going to be in trouble.
Well, there's, you know, there's some public records issues that you're touching on there.
Yes, but I'm just, I'm...
You have to understand...
I didn't put on this, the state put this meeting on for...
I understand, education is good.
Yes.
I am an old school guy, give me a notebook and a piece of paper and a pen, I don't know if you ever saw this, the NFL had a rule that they all had to go to iPads, and Bill Belichick was trying to use an iPad, got frustrated at halftime, slammed the thing, I don't know how much it cost, and he was back on a piece of paper and a pencil behind his ear. I'm of that school.
The microchefs share one town.
I'm of that school, but when I came aboard, unbeknown to me, we went paperless. The town, am I correct?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so.
We're not paperless.
Well, yeah, that's kind of the thing, like it's great that we have all the stuff online, but if you don't have your own computer...
My, what I needed to do my job, because they were, we went paperless. So I am all for...
I can assure you, my office is not, my office right now, my temporary office, is not paperless, Abby's been there.
Okay, then we need to have our agendas and all.
Yeah, I'll say, like for me, it's been, it's been a burden, because I end up, I go to the library to use the library computer.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, yeah, because again, similar to what Bill had mentioned, I don't want to use personal devices to do town work.
I understand.
So when I go to Outlook, I go up to the library, login there, I don't even use my phone to do that, just because I would think that the town would have their own required security settings that they would want, and that's what I want. So, so I, too, of the paper mind, I do, I work on, with computers all day. When I do this type of review, I like it printed out, because...
Something more textural about it for me, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I agree.
So we should make a motion, maybe that we get our...
What you should do is start, start working with Abby and Nora on what you need to build into the budget for yourselves next year, and see what they can do for you this year.
Yeah, and another thing, probably next month we should get into our organizational chat to see where we are as an organization within the town. It just to...
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense, it lies up, it lies up with the...
I mean, these things, these are things that some of us may or may not know where we, you know, what our position in the town is, but I know it's, I know what it is, but some may not. And I think we have to take our responsibility very serious, and I think we have to use improvements as far as doing certain things.
So for, moving forward, I, as far as I'm not going to use a laptop, I will use essentially paper, that's how I like to review, to do this type of an item. I know that there are some board members that have used personal devices, I think that that's not a good idea.
Well, if I could, the town, we did go electronic, starting in January.
Not completely, though, Abby.
The applications, yes.
Oh, okay.
The planning board, the planning boards, all their applications are filed electronically, and that's something that's been in the works since I started here, we were working on developing and rolling out an electronic submission through town. So we started first with the building department, health division, zoning, planning, conservation, licensing, all through online. I did request back in November last year, some of these, what we have here tonight, tests Chromebooks, but my request was for these laptops or devices to be used during the meetings, because I requested seven of them to be shared with this board, that we would all, we would keep them here, because we'd also use them for zoning board and conservation commission meetings.
Yeah, how does that work when you, when you go home and you're supposed to review?
We have to review these at home.
Right, right, so we do have, you should be using your planning board email, so that's what I've given you a couple times, that's, that's your planning board town email, so you should be using that. Yes, it does, all your information is available electronically from...
When we get that email, what...
The issue is, it's, it's, it's simple, and I understand why we went electronic for the applications, but for review, I review on paper. The plans I need to see, full size to get into the details, even this, like, look at tonight, here's a perfect example, those, those streets, you can't see the full, the full street there, you'd have to line up two pieces of paper together, so...
Well, that's how it is on a plan, but...
So we have two things, one is we want it to go over the cycle, and thank you for explaining that.
We've done that, yep.
So, so anything that you need as a planning board member, we submit that as a request.
And?
So that can be on an ongoing basis.
Absolutely.
And again?
And I would encourage you to do it on an ongoing basis, because if you don't do it on, my experience, working with town budgets for over 18 years, if you don't submit it on an ongoing basis, you lose it and it gets buried and you don't get it in.
Right. But, you know, again, according to the inspector general, we're not supposed to be using anything but town property to even receive our emails. If there is a problem, we lose that device that we're receiving the emails. We need, if we're going to go paperless, that's what we, we, we need that.
Yeah, let's let Dave have the floor.
Pat, how does, how does the select board handle this? Because I know that in the past, there was a book, right? There was, they put together this big binder with all the materials in it and stuff, and has that all been made electronic now?
I don't know, Dave, I've been out of the loop for three years, and I'm going to plead ignorance on that one.
We used to get the binder, right?
And I love the binder, okay?
And so I believe, now they have, they have surface books or something up there that they work off of, and at home, I assume, like me, they access it on their home computer or something and do it online.
Which is...
It's a risk.
The inspector general said, don't not do that, don't do it.
They didn't have to, they did not have to put together, as far as I know, a budget to authorize like those devices for themselves, I mean, I think the town does that, the IT department probably, it's just, I feel like our issue is more of a, we're not in, we're last in line, or not last, because there's other boards that don't have anything, but still, it's just, I think you'd follow this approach, whatever the select board's doing, then this board should have the similar...
And, and it sounds to me like someone needs to have a discussion with IT about, about how you move from to electronic filings and how you need to process that through your operations, so that's probably the place where the discussion needs to be had, not so much a budgetary discussion, but a technological discussion.
What is the need?
Yeah, it seems to me that this...
What is the need?
Right.
It seems to me that this is a discussion, that this board is not, it's not in our purview to decide what we legally are entitled to or need to have, I think that's up to our town council.
There's only, there's only three boards that I know that have budget responsibility.
I'm not even talking about budget, I'm talking about legally, are the members at risk if they are using their personal devices? I've been on this board since 2011 or 12, and I've been on FinCom, I've never felt at risk, I've always used my personal devices, I don't feel the need to spend money on me so I can have, just a minute, Bill, please. But I believe it is up to the town to come up with its official position, where the select board members, where the FinCom members, if they're appointed, they're not elected, and any other board members, I believe it should be whatever the town decides, and if it's up to this board to bring that question to the town to decide, the town should decide, and then whatever the decision is, it's made by the town, not by this board for just this board, or the select board for just that select board. We're talking about a legal exposure, of possible exposure of the board members. I personally don't feel exposed, but I get that some people do.
Yeah, and I would really like, if you had, hand out materials from the IG, I'd like you to share them with me if you would.
Here, but I'm not going to give this one to you, this is all I got.
Okay, make a copy, or give it to me and I'll make a copy.
I guess what I'm saying is, I would like to see the town come up with, and if it's right now is you're not at risk, this is not what we're doing for budget reasons, for legal reasons, whatever it is, I'll abide by that. If they, if the board, if the town says every board member needs to have their own device to do what Bill is suggesting, then I'll go with that, too. But I don't think it's up to our board to decide for the town what the town should have.
It's a policy discussion.
That's what I mean, yeah.
I understand.
Who in the town would make that decision?
Well, the town itself would make that decision, probably through the budget cycle. So, and ultimately, town meeting has control over the budget.
No, 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 I think Bill's replying to the decision on what is the policy on using personal devices and the level of...
It would probably be generated discussion with the IT department, okay? And I'd probably get involved. I don't understand or can't comprehend where you're coming from in terms of what the, you heard from the IG, I have used personal devices.
So I think a scenario is, an applicant comes in, a decision doesn't go their way, they make a complaint, and then a...
Talking discovery.
Discovery. And then they say, what do you use to review? And then they say, oh, you use that iPad, we would like to, we're going to need to take that for the discovery phase. So now you're out, now you're without your phone, your iPad.
I think that, that would be an interesting legal question, I'm not sure that, you're reviewing public documents. Public documents are public documents, no matter where they are.
But as the person from the inspector general's office says, he says, you know, everything's going hunky-dory, but then one day something like this happens, and, you know, somebody's going through your sand, so, well, look at this, look at this, look at this, I mean, they go through everything that you have, it's just, you're putting yourself out there and there's no need for us to put ourselves out there.
I understand your point.
So thank you very much for coming.
It's a pleasure.
Do you have any, any other comments to, any, any questions that we had, or?
I don't.
Okay. So what I've heard here is that there's a level of personal decision made currently to review. Two is that if there is a need for an individual planning board member, to let that be known to Abby. Right now, I end up, I send emails to, there's administrative help or functions within...
Right, we have...
Because I would like to have everything just printed for me, I'm like that, I like to review by paper. I make annotations.
I think you should, what I've told Brian is to request probably Karen Flynn or Tiana Malone in our office, if you have a specific, like such as a page number.
I want the, I want it all printed.
Well, you have to be more clear for everything, because I often post, I mean, I upload to your pack, it's just a lot of reference document material that isn't necessarily...
Yeah, like I see what you're saying, so like the bylaw?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't need them to print out the bylaw, just...
You know, specify like the plans or something.
Yeah, I don't need that.
In paper?
Yes.
So you know what I'll do is, I will, I will email them, and so they have access to all the folders, and I'll work, you know what I'll do, I'll set up a meeting with them so that they can just do it, because what I would like it to be is more without a trigger. It is a burden, again, I don't use my personal computer to do town business, so I go up to the library and login and use it that way and do my reviews that way and request that way. So I'll, I'll have a meeting with them to figure out a systematic way.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, do you have an account at the library that you access to get on?
Yeah, I do. It's your, essentially your library card, so it's a...
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
So as, if I think about it in terms of his point, that would also be accessible at some point in time if litigation ensued.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so that further complicates the matter, so that's why I'm, I'll have the meeting and just...
When you're using that, you don't have your personal pictures on there and stuff like that at that library.
Yeah, they, I mean, if they wanted to confiscate the library computer...
So be it.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's back to like why the email, why we have town email addresses, so here's the back and forth. So have, do you use your, have you ever used your personal email account to communicate about an applicant or something like that, or some?
No.
If you said yes, I'd say, okay, well, I want to see, I want you access to your personal email account now. So if you, if you use this device, that's your personal device, and the concern would be that it's a similar, it's analogous, that you'd say, well, you used it, if you've ever used it for something related to this board, and that something comes under litigation, then they should have a right to look at this, because there could be things on here, maybe, you know, you communicated inappropriately with somebody, or I don't know, but that's, I think that's, that's the concern, analogous to the email.
Everything I'm hearing is a concern, and I get that. My request, why don't we trigger the question to our town council and any other people, have them come up with a town policy? Because we'll come up with anecdotal evidence, like I've said, I've never felt exposed, I have used personal devices, I've been doing this for seven years, so I don't see the reason, but I get that other people do. I will follow whatever the town decides, I don't think it's up to this board to decide town policy for these legal issues. I believe that's up to our legal department to come up with the answers and a policy.
So we've started the conversation?
Yeah, that's what I, I agree, and wherever Pat needs to take it, we'll take it and go.
So I'll, I'll sit down with, with the two people in your group to get the printouts.
Right, I mean, we've, we've gone electronics, we prefer not to just print everything out, but if you need a second sheet...
The problem is, the town went electronic, and then they didn't give the board members the tool to access it.
It's assumed that you can have access to electronic.
If the inspector general is recommending not to use a personal device, then I follow that recommendation.
Well, first of all, I should check that, what year it is, we've gone electronic, a lot of state laws are outdated. We're one of the earlier towns to have electronic permitting with boards and commissions, so that's why we did a couple years ago, we did implement the board email addresses for regulatory boards, so that's one way to protect you that you should be using. And then my request was for the Chromebooks at the meeting, so do you want to go with that or not? Because I see one closed over here, and you haven't touched this one, so are you going to use it or not?
I tried touching this, but it keeps going, and I can't get onto it.
It's our first try, we'll get the next, the next meeting and all.
So should I go forward with these? That's what...
I think they're helpful at the meeting, but it doesn't help if somebody wants to use it to review at home, if you then can't take it home. But I think we got what we need tonight.
I think what you should have...
Pat, it's great to have you here, he's going to look into...
Devices here for everybody at the meeting.
Now, just another thing, while Pat's here, we ask people to identify themselves, their address, and the inspector general says, that's a no-no.
I find that very strange, the town publishes a book with everybody's name and address.
Yes.
There's no, I can't, I looked for a...
There's no, I can't, I looked for a right of privacy in your name and your address. I'm sorry.
I've looked and I can't find one. So I would be interested in speaking to someone from the inspector general, what their basis is.
You can probably call them on it, but one of the reasons they say is, why do you ask somebody, this is a public meeting. You don't have to be from Westwood to come to this meeting.
No, you don't have to be from Westwood, but I think it's important to know, and I go back to the first Westwood station permitting, there were people from Canton going to those meetings and being the loudest vocal opponents of that project where they had very little skin in the game. And, and that was troubling to me back then. So, and it also gives you, using your example, if there's a problem, you have a much cleaner record if you know that Joe Smith, and I'll use my address, 103 Church Street, made a statement at a meeting that becomes the subject of litigation. You have a much cleaner record that way. So I, I don't know of any right of privacy that's being violated if you do that. You can choose not to as a policy. I would recommend you think long and hard before you make that change, just so your records are clean. When you go to vote, you have to state your name, your address, and in a primary, you have to, you have to state your political party, and there can be observers there marking you down and watching you. So.
And he even said, town meeting's different, because you're voting at town meeting. So you should give your name and address if you're speaking there. But he said, at a public meeting, it's public. So the public should not be intimidated. They should be able to speak there.
So how about if we, it sounds like you had a good contact, Bill. Do you want to share that with Pat?
I'm happy to talk to him, yeah.
Because it'd be nice to tie up that.
Yeah, I, I just was, when I first heard this, I was horrified, because we, because we've done it so long as a matter of policy, and it makes for a much cleaner record.
We weren't the only town. Most of the towns out there did it. And he said, why do you do it? Just ask yourself why, because he says, you really don't need that information. Just why do you ask?
I respectfully disagree, but I'll talk to him. Two lawyers, three opinions.
Well, what can I tell you? I'm just saying that.
So this is good. Then the last thing with regards to the budget is, when is the budget review cycle? Is that, is that town meeting in the spring? So when should we be looking at it?
Well, you should start thinking about it right now.
I mean, even reviewing what the spend was.
What you spend on a yearly basis?
So we, so we've gone over what, any requests?
I, I get a monthly report of the legal budget.
Okay.
Okay? So I know what's been spent and what has not been spent. And when I was on the Board of Selectmen, I would get a report that says, this is where you are in the budget cycle.
We don't get one of those, though.
I bet.
I mean, the planning board doesn't have.
We don't spend money.
A budget per se.
As a board.
We do spend money.
Not really. It's planning division. It's planning division.
Yes.
But it says, it says planning board.
Right. It'll, it means planning division. We got 50, you're a volunteer board that serves without compensation. That's it.
We're not a volunteer board.
You are.
Are we volunteers?
Yes. It says it right here in the, in the charter. Members shall serve without compensation.
No.
Aren't we nominated?
No, you don't, you, you, you're elected, but you're, you volunteered to run.
It says you have a planning board. A planning board of five members shall be elected, three years, overlapping terms. Members shall serve without compensation. Doesn't say we're volunteers.
Oh, it just did.
Well, let's, well, let's get to, let's get to the budget, because I, what I want to make sure is that we're doing our job.
And that's basically what it comes down to.
I understand.
So, I'm glad that you're here. This is great.
No one's ever said that to me before.
So it says, planning board budget, and then it's planning division. So what are we responsible for?
There are only three boards that are responsible, to my knowledge, to deliver budgets in the town. The Board of Selectmen's responsibility to deliver the overall budget to town meeting and get it approved. The school committee has to deliver a budget within that, and they only have to deliver a bottom line budget. When the town delivers a budget, it's, you know, we go through appendix D at town meeting. They read all the lines. We can't vary from that. If we do, we have to go back and get approval from FinCom to move money, and sometimes even town meeting to move money. So that's why you see the cleanup articles at any town meeting. The other is, the sewer commission is responsible to deliver a budget to run the sewers, within the overall town frame, the, the overall framework of the town. So you don't have significant budget responsibilities. You need to be able to operate as a board, and you need to work with the staff to do that. That's the way you should address your budgets.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
And, and the town is, I can assure you that the town is interested in making sure you have the tools you need to get the job done.
Yeah, they have one I've requested, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good. So when that, that pamphlet that's written up, it has a nice summary. So what is, when does that get written?
The budget, the full detailed budget that I sent you?
There's a five pager with the budget, and it has a summary of planning board activities throughout the year.
That's what I usually submit in November. So it's usually around early November before, before Thanksgiving. And then the Board of Selectmen and the Finance and Warrant Commission start reviewing throughout the whole winter, throughout the spring.
And it's an, it's an integrated process. I mean, it's not, it's not always easy to get the budget put together. You have to get the school committee on board. You have budget steering committee meetings. You have, it takes a lot of effort to coordinate.
It's complicated. No, I'm more speaking to, so part of the budget, there's a three-page summary. So I just want to make sure the planning board reviews that, because it talks about.
Absolutely.
It talks about what we've done.
One of the best sources, resources you have is, is the FinCom booklets that go out on the budget as part of the FinCom review. So if you pay attention to those, you'll be in, you'll be in pretty good shape and very knowledgeable. And go to the FinCom hearings if you want to participate. You learn a lot there.
I sure do.
Now, just to clarify state law, okay?
Okay.
It says that the, it's just an excerpt, but the, the planning board, which we do, elect annually a chairman and a co-chair, and we may employ experts and clerical and other assistants.
And when you do that, you usually force the applicant to pay for that, correct?
Peer review.
Peer review.
Oh, yeah, perfect, but, so does that go into the budget and then out of the budget?
No.
They just pay it directly?
Yes.
It goes into a separate account.
Does it?
A peer review.
So we should probably have a budget set up for that? Yes?
No, it doesn't come into a planning board.
It goes through.
Oh, peer, it's a peer review.
It's peer review, yeah. It's.
Chapter 53.
Is that what it is?
Something 53G or.
I don't have them all memorized, sorry.
It's not part, it's not part of the general budget.
Who writes a check to the peer review?
The applicant pays the funds to the town.
And the town treasurer or whomever.
Yep, the treasurer holds these funds in a separate account.
Right, not the planning board.
Nope.
Not the town planner.
Nope.
Not Nora Lockner.
Nope.
It's the treasurer who releases the funds.
Correct.
Right.
So we should, so it should go into a fund that we know about, and we should be able to see it come and go, correct?
I guess, I mean.
Well, I do. I keep track of that on behalf of the planning board. So the contract is between the town planning board and the peer reviewer. So the peer reviewer sends us, like, the invoices for the work. It's paid, I review it, and it comes from the account that the treasurer's holding to pay, that the applicant has funded.
But also it goes on, we can employ experts.
Absolutely.
And clerical.
On an as-needed basis.
Huh?
As an, on an as-needed basis.
And other assistants.
On an as-needed basis.
Right. So we do, in fact, have a budget supposedly, or should?
No, because it's, it's done as you need to, as you need to hire people to do specific reviews. You don't, you don't start in November and say, I'm going to need a half a million dollars for peer review. As an applicant comes in, you look and say, we need to get a peer review person, and we probably need some clerical help around this. And then you let the applicant know, and they can say, I believe they can say yay or nay. And if they say nay, it probably kills their application.
Yeah.
But, but, yeah, it's not, that's not something that needs to happen in the budget process. That's an ongoing pro, and there are several areas that do that, I'm pretty sure within town, where they have to employ experts, and the experts actually paid for by the outside person.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome. I hope to see you all at FinCom.
Right.
As we've seen them all here.
You've often have been at some of those meetings, but then sometimes they will have the detailed budget one, or on Tuesday nights, sometimes they conflict with yours, like in the, in the March timeframe.
And that summary's really nice. You do a nice job with that, Abby. So I think we're all set from that aspect. So the Moving Together Conference, Thursday, October 24th?
Yes, so that is.
An email that you sent out.
Yes. So we do have money for one member. It's a hundred dollars, if anyone's, I think.
I would recommend you go.
Yeah, I was interested in going, unless Deb, Bill.
Nope, you go.
So I'm interested in it.
Okay.
How does I get paid?
Um.
I'm just kidding.
No, well, yeah, it's in the, I put, it is in the library. We have had some members.
Don't give me straight lines like that, all right?
We've had members, we've had one member go in the past year.
Yes, I'll come back and report on what I've heard and share information. And then I'll just work with you offline.
Yep, to get, to get you registered.
Great. The next, so I asked for you to add this, the review of abutting town developments, Abby, just because of the activity in the last couple of weeks. So.
Yes.
We, you hear about a development, sometimes it comes as a surprise. You might hear from a different, you being anybody, and then the town has to react to it.
Right. Under, under the, you know, State Zoning Act, special permits, variances do require notification to the abutting towns. So parties of interest, abutters, but also all the abutting towns' planning boards. So I do get those, I review those. However, recently, we learned about the, on University Ave, the S or Concrete Plant Propose, we did not get notification of that. Usually, we do get them from several towns, and we, we get them in the planning office. So myself or someone else in the office, we review them as they come in. For that one, we did not hear about until a couple of days before. Normally, if we do, if it's something you might be interested in, I would let you know of an upcoming hearing. And sometimes you review it at one of your meetings, and you may send comments. We did that before in Dedham, and we sent in comments. This one, we did not have, know about it until right before, but we did send a letter to the town noting that we weren't notified, and then in opposition to that, that proposal. And then we did find out that day the applicant requested with, to withdraw, withdraw the application. So they, the zoning board in Norwood did withdraw that application.
Is that the second time they've withdrawn?
Um, I think it was denied before.
Was it denied?
It wasn't approved, yeah.
It was denied, and then they, I believe, and then they changed the zoning bylaws to prevent it and to be able to keep their foot in the door. They filed an I and R.
A and R.
A and R, pardon me. I'm learning the lingo. They filed an A and R, and then they were going forward and they withdrew. I don't know what that withdrawal means at this point in time for their A and R, but right now it's off the table.
Yeah, for now they did. I think they still have that, the A and R froze the zoning for.
Three years.
Two or three years. I forget what it is.
Starting now, or?
Starting from when that A and R was submitted.
Maybe that clock was running out.
I believe that clock, well, I think they've got some time left.
Still left.
Well, they, I don't know, the, the letter you sent us didn't really have a lot of detail, but I thought I read in the newspaper that the chair, that they said that they withdrew with prejudice on that particular application, so.
Hold on, let me see. Oh, I think, let me see, I think we have.
And there was, I hope everybody saw the letter that.
That Mike Gillette wrote.
Mike Gillette wrote. It was a very powerful, strong, critical.
Yeah, that was a nice letter.
Letter, I, you know, it would be.
We, I had some hand in that. We were trying to reserve all our rights on that, and the biggest right was we weren't notified. And, and we wanted to make sure that was clear for future issues.
What's the standard like? I mean, obvious, is it any sort of, how would, where, how would you tell the difference between like ZBA applications here where someone's, you know, putting an addition on their house? They don't have to notify Norwood and Dedham and everything about that. But I think things like this, yes, but is there?
For all special permits, they do have to.
Yeah, anything.
For any special permit, they're supposed to.
Variance or, yeah, ZBA special permit.
All special permits and all variances.
As mundane as it may sound.
And then it's a local decision if you notify for site plan review, which, so we do for, you know.
So if someone in Norwood wants a special permit to put a deck on their house on the other side, that's probably not something we're going to be interested in.
Well, got it.
Right.
But it'd be on the list of things we see as being heard.
Would be something we should see, yes. It's at our option.
Right.
Whether you pursue it, yeah.
And so as far as, I just want to make sure that as a board, we're, then they have the hearing. Obviously, we want to be informed, so we go to those hearings. And then, again, same thing with, for quorum issues, if there's three or more, you just sit separately and don't speak to each other?
No, not necessarily. I would really encourage you not to, to have a quorum at a meeting like that. Had that meeting gone forward in Norwood, I think probably Mr. Gillette and perhaps myself might have gone, and that would have been it. Okay? Open meeting law applies no matter where you are. And you got, you got to post it unless it's an emergency.
Yeah.
So, so that's, that's when you got to have conversations and make decisions about who's going and why.
Okay.
Right. So in, in one, at the Dedham one, I know, I think we had enough time. We did provide a letter from the board, and then I think Nora attended the hearing. So I think if we know in advance, you could decide, you know, who's able to attend and, you know, send a letter or who's able to represent the board. So usually, sometimes staff or the chair would represent.
And then there's, so when some.
Chairman, in the interest of full disclosure.
Sure.
I believe Nora came off her vacation time to really draft, help draft the backbone of the letter.
Right.
Okay? So she should be credited for that.
Yeah, it was well-written. So good, that's fine.
And we did get a couple other from Needham and Dedham zoning amendments. I didn't look through the, but I did, I did upload them, because they're working on their fall town meeting. So in your packet I did, we got notices for their September hearings. Kind of their, let's see, they are, one's on September 17th in Needham. So they, they included all their, their zoning amendments.
Great. Thank you for sharing that.
There we go.
So I think that we're okay with this part moving forward?
I do, I do think it's good for us to, I think we should be careful that we never, we don't have an open meeting law issue, but it is, I think, useful to see what's going on in the other towns and all. I went to a Dedham planning board meeting and met the chair and stuff there. And it's good to kind of see what, what's going on in other places. And so I was going to go to this one, and I saw, this was like the most unpopular thing anybody ever proposed, I think. So it was, there was people lined up to, I think, figuratively to go to that meeting. So I'm glad that it, that they withdrew that in application. But I think as long as we don't go as a group, and we're still, it's, it's useful to see what's going on in the neighboring towns and kind of, I wanted to see what, you know, how can we, what can we learn from what's going on in other towns. So that's, anyway.
Right. Thank you, Deb. And then, so committee appointments? So you have a list that you provided in the packet?
Right. So this is, they still have a few others to appoint.
And so we have to get up to Dottie's office for.
To get sworn in anytime during town hall office hours.
Okay.
I know Brian was recommended as a regional transportation advisory council committee member. I don't think you've been officially appointed yet, but I, someone from the RTAC did contact me, asking who the new contact was and was hoping you would be able to attend meetings. me asking who the new contact was and was hoping you would be able to attend meetings. They're usually the second Wednesday of the month in Boston at 3:00 PM.
Yep.
So they were asking for the new contact, so I let him know, I'll get back to him soon on, on the new, so I can follow up with you on that, because that's time to work.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so I'll keep you informed.
Okay, so next item, so we have a number of meeting minutes to approve?
Actually, only, the only ones that were ready were June 25th and July 15th. And I know Dave did give me a couple, I think, June 25th, Dave abstained from the vote, not against, I wrote against accidentally in the minutes. It was for the Brigham and Women's. And on July 15th, we accidentally wrote Junior, Brian Gorman Junior, so we, I just corrected that and fixed Dave's name, yeah. So it's amended.
Right. Do you have a motion to approve those?
Do we have to wait to approve them or can we approve them?
Um, you can, you can approve them as, as amended if you, if you're ready.
I make, make a motion to approve the minutes from June 25th, 2019, and July 15th to 2019 with the amendments.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. I wasn't here on the 25th, so I have to abstain.
Okay.
I would approve the 15th if, if asked.
Should we motion to both of, did you, did you make a motion for both?
Um, I think.
Yes.
So maybe we might have to do them separately.
Oh, separately?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for June 25th, 2019 with the amendments as stated.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so four to zero.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from July 15th, 2019 with the amendments as stated.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so it's five to zero. Okay, so that's it for meeting minutes. And then there's, so Islington Center redevelopment, so CVS is coming along quickly, they put landscaping in.
Yes, they're working on the landscaping, that was, they're getting ready to open, but there is a condition of occupancies to have it, the landscaping completed by October 1st. There's also, I know there's been some questions about the windows, you can see the refrigeration units in there. There are two window signs that are coming in any day now, so those should cover that. Or, you know, I've asked them if we could come up with some other design scheme if that's to cover, or at least make it look, look better, to work with them on that. But I, I think what they have approved for window signs will cover at least the backside of the refrigerators.
And would that come to us, the signage?
No, you already approved a signage plan in the concept forum at, at the meeting during the special permit and then I reviewed it prior to the sign application with the building department.
So you just, you review it based on what the approval?
Yeah.
Like, what's the percentage, like, I know the, the outside sign was approved, but the, like, how much of the window can be covered by a sign, like, we had all the discussion with.
It's a different FMUOD though.
Yeah, let me think if that was.
I don't know what we have for signage.
I think the, the best thing would be if, if the builder could have another meeting like he did, early in the project, like a community meeting to kind of update everybody on, on where things are and get some feedback about what's coming. I think that would be a good thing to do, as well as get the town, the plans for the library and all that, it would be a good time to do something now that in September, when everybody's back from the summer and just, just kind of update everybody because it's, things are moving along and it would be a good chance to get some feedback.
So you recommend again, a library update meeting?
No, I mean, having, I'm thinking that it would be useful if, to have a meeting where Mr. Petruzziello and town staff like Nora met with residents and talked about, here's what's happening next, here's what he, here's what the CVS is, looks like now, get feedback if people have concerns about the signs and the landscaping and whatnot, they could at least hear what that is now and maybe make adjustments or see what, how it's going. Something to reconnect.
The residents don't know the staging like we are aware of.
Yeah, and just in knowing, like, I know we saw here, like, so the library, we're looking to have the foundation for the new library and relocate the building in October. You know, I think all of that would be a good thing to put together, like a, like an hour meeting on a Saturday morning or something like that. And maybe it's not a.
Just keep, don't you think like. I think it might be, the developer may consider that an undue burden. He is building what he was told he could build and he's not deviating from that. I think it would be, the onus would be on the town to inform the residents, this is what's happening, this is what the developer is doing. I don't, I mean, if the developer wants to do it, I think that's fine and you can ask him, but I don't think he owes that to the town. It'd be great if he could, but legally, he's done everything that he's said.
I'm just suggesting, and I did, he seemed to be.
I, I agree, he seems like he's more than happy to do these things, but he could easily say, you know what, no, I've, I've done everything I said I was going to do and I don't need to do that, or I don't want to hire my attorney to come in and pay him an hour and a half to answer questions, whatever.
It's also part of, it's a community project, so.
I understand, and that's why I said, I think the, the burden or the onus is on the town to communicate with the, with the people and they can communicate on the behalf of the developer. I'd, I, it'd be great if he did, I'm just saying, I don't think he owes it to us. I'd be, I'd love it if he was a good neighbor and did it, but I don't think he needs to do it as part of this application process. He's done everything that he said he was going to do and he's, we don't, we don't have any reason to doubt him. I get you're saying, just give us an update. His update is my application that you approved.
Right, we haven't, we've been trying to do kind of quarterly updates, so we'll probably do for one pretty soon. We are also internally, staff is trying to organize a team meeting to review, I think, final design plans for the town's building for Wentworth Hall, the library and the community center. So we're either meeting later this week or early next week, so hopefully we can finalize those designs. But I'll talk to Nora and Petruzziello about ideas for updates and getting out information. You could probably also put something maybe in the Westwood Wire for another update when we have. So CVS is hoping to open within the week. And then the next building that Petruzziello will be working on is the retail building where the CVS gets CVS into the new location and renovating that one.
Stage two.
And then the town, we're working on relocating the library and doing that addition.
Abby, would it be a burden on staff to maybe come up with some content for the Westwood Weekly or Hometown Weekly or Westwood Press?
Yeah.
Because I think a lot of, everyone gets the Hometown Weekly, I think, in their mail.
Okay.
That would be a good place just to disseminate the information from the town's perspective.
I read that.
Abby, I have a question. Was it CVS's requirement or the planning boards that there be a CVS sign on School Street, the Washington Street and the parking lot as well as monument sign? I mean, is it CVS, you can tell it's CVS.
We did not request that many signs, I think they came to you, or the planning board with a signage package that was approved in concept and then finalized during the special permit stage. Right, so CVS was very involved in the permitting process through the whole project, more so than, well, the other tenants are unknown for the buildings across the street. So they, they are held to more different, you had different requirements and conditions for them than CVS. They were a known tenant and known entity that they did have their specific request. They requested the monument sign.
And then all the, the three signs as well?
So I think we've reached the end of our meeting.
We have received or in, in process right now, an application for 215 High Street. That is 19 age-restricted units. They came a preliminary review in 2018. Yep. So they're, I still reviewing it for completeness, but they filed for the October 1st meeting. So we did, before the weekend, I sent out requests for peer reviews to the groups that we normally work with. I asked them to submit by next Monday, September 9th. To keep things moving, does the whole board, I think you, the last time we talked about this, you all want to review them at your next meeting, which would be the 17th?
Review the.
The proposals you might get. I guess my question to you is, if you only get one, can we move ahead with just the one? Because the meeting from September 17th, then it's only a one-week turnaround for them to, the peer reviewer, to provide the report in time for your meeting. So I'm just kind of thinking about.
Is that something that we could receive and review and give you feedback, what are, what we'd like to see, or do we need to vote on it?
You're asking for administrative authority to just go ahead and hire the one person who wants the job.
Right, so I think right now, I'm asking you for. I'm asking you, I guess, to give permission, if we only have one.
Right.
Proposal.
For expediency.
Well, yeah, for, for, to be expeditious in the review. Can I just notify them that they've been selected? Or if you have more than one, you would review at your September 17th meeting. But that just means the next day they would have to turn around and.
And what are the three again, Beta?
Um, we.
Have we worked with all three in the past?
I know, I have heard from some of them that they've kind of, they've stopped in the past, others stopped responding because we've gone with one group. So I'm not positive we'll get other responses, but if we do, I think.
And Beta is one of them.
And Beta is generally one of them. But we also send it to, and you have used before, Beals and Thomas, PSC, and I did send it to VHB and McMahon Associates.
When are you going to receive it?
Uh, May, September 9th, Monday, September 9th.
I think I would still want to see it, because if, I'd like to see what their response is to the application itself, just to, for me to show due diligence on the, the RFP.
Yeah.
So I can keep my, my eye out for it. I deal with RFPs through my line of work and I, I like to review the material to see, because some RFPs, they, they even get the names of.
Right.
The company wrong, which shows that they're not thinking, so.
Yeah, you can.
But what you're asking is if there's, in the absence of competition.
Yeah.
You're asking us to give you authority to hire the one person or one company that responded.
If it was Beta, I would go with Beta. If Beta was the only one, you've sent out the RFP.
Yep, to multiple, five or so.
I don't have a problem with you selecting.
How concerned are you here? Think, are you okay with that?
If you only have one response, you don't have a lot of choice.
Okay, I'm okay with, if it's Beta, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
But even if Beta, for some reason, chooses not to and you get someone, someone else, our choice is to either go with them or not go with the peer review.
Yeah.
But if I, if we haven't worked with them, if it's the one that we haven't done work with in a, in a long time and their proposal is riddled with typos and it, and instead of Westwood, they write Needham, then it looks like a ship that I don't want to sail on.
It, I agree, but at the same time, we're not footing this bill. We're not the ones hiring them, we're, we're selecting them.
We need to make sure that they, they do a good job of reviewing it.
I, I don't, and it, the applicant can, can say no, right?
I think we pay them though.
No, we don't.
No, this is, this is.
They pay them direct?
Yep, the applicant pays them, but that's why it takes a little bit of time to get this.
It'll, it'll slow down the whole process, you say, so October 1st will be out of the question to start this process.
And the reason I was looking for October 1st is because I think you might have, I have other applications coming in for your October 2nd, 22nd meeting and we want to review the comprehensive plan, so I'm looking to get.
When is it coming in, Monday?
The peer review is coming in on Monday, I've asked for them.
The, the proposal.
The proposals, the requests.
I think for, for my due diligence, I want to see the proposal. If it's, if Beta is the only one that comes in.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
But if it's, if it's.
I don't have a problem with Abby. If it, if it passes muster with Abby for one person, one group, I'm fine with Abby still saying, go with them. I find it hard to believe Beta would not submit one, so we'd have at least competition or it would just be Beta. But that notwithstanding, I personally, I would give you administrative authority to choose the one person. If you thought the application looked fine or the, the.
How do the other companies feel?
I know that looking at the previous RFPs, you know, as you were saying, some of the, they gave the wrong town when they were mentioning, doing the proposal for us. And then some of them, the financials were very high for what they were charging, so I think it is interesting to take a look at them and.
Yeah, I think, I'd like to review it.
Okay, all right, so it'll be, you'll have it?
I can read it in one day.
I know, we can get back to you.
By Tuesday, midday.
Yeah.
Tuesday noon.
Well, you can't make any decisions outside of.
We have to vote on it at the next meeting.
We could just send you an email though, right?
Individually.
Exactly.
Okay.
Couldn't we, could, would it be permissible to do something like where we sort of say, if anyone objects, you know, like, when there's some of these things that come along that sort of need an administrative approval and just.
You're bypassing the open meeting law and you're essentially deliberating.
Yeah, privately.
Outside of an open meeting, which robs the public of their ability to participate. So you've got to be very careful if you do something like that. The only other, other thing I thought of is if you have a lesser-known company who's the lowest bidder, then you're going to have some issues to deal with as well.
Great. What I recall is there's three and two of them are fairly well-known with us and I don't have a problem with. The third one seemed like they came in really high and I wasn't familiar with.
Yeah.
So I'd be comfortable with Beta, definitely, and with the other, with PSC, is it the other one, that PSC?
And Beals and Thomas, we used to use them in the past more often, but only once of, in the last couple of years. Yeah, so we.
Those I would be fine with.
I think it would be good if we had a, if we have to vote on every single one, then it's going to be hard to get, but if we had like a set, if we said it's these three are qualified, but we just don't know that it's three.
That's what, that's what we typically do. Submits like we did with Fox Hill Village.
We usually do review as they come in. It just, it's just timing-wise, it is about a two-week process to get to a planning board meeting where you can review them.
So how can we give our recommendation in a, in a BCC situation?
You shouldn't really.
Abby sends out the proposals, do we need to?
If you only have one, your mission is pretty much done because you don't have others to choose from.
But if we have two, my concern obviously is the, is the one where it's riddled with typos and it shows that they haven't really.
And they, and they bid it low, yeah, that's.
So.
You've got to hold that for a meeting and make it public decision.
Yeah, that's everything, unless it's one, you got to have a meeting.
Right.
You can't do it by email.
But I, all right, I have another scenario. Two proposals come in. I send an email to Abby saying I'm fine with both of them, I give you, I, I'll, I'll let you, I'll give you administrative.
What is the rest of your board thing?
See what they say through their.
See, you're deliberating outside the open meeting process when you do that.
It's collusion without collusion.
Unless you're not communicating with each other, which is always a no-no.
What if we, what if the board just, so authorizes Brian to make the decision on this?
Yeah, that's.
And we're not, we're not, he wants, he's the most, wants to review it, he's the chair, why not do that if we let him pick among, if it's one or two or?
Does the chair have that distinguished more power? It, it's just one vote, he's just running the meeting.
You're, all peers, I mean.
Yeah.
So who do we send this?
Okay, so we'll, um.
Can't vote on someone else to do our job.
Okay, we'll just go with, we'll review them all on the 7th, on the 17th. If we get more, more than one, you'll have multiple to review. And then we'll just be ready on the next day, because I would like them to turn around a review in five, in five business days.
Can I ask?
Have it ready for your meeting.
Town council, if you give us a recommendation other than that, because I, so the, the proposals come in on Monday, we don't have a meeting, do you?
Multiple proposals come in on Monday?
Two proposals, two out of. Two proposals, two out of.
Then I think you got to meet and, and review them in, in public session, and make, and have a public vote. I think anything less than that, you'd be, you stand to be challenged on an open meeting violation, law violation. I'm sorry, I wish I could streamline it for you.
No, no, I, I appreciate the.
I'm all about getting stuff done, but not in violation of an open meeting law issue.
Fine.
Yeah, and I'll reiterate, I'm fine, if one, whoever it might be, if it passes muster with Abby, I'm fine with her saying, yes, I want to go with this company. Typos notwithstanding, whatever, if Abby's comfortable, I'm comfortable with her, she's the one working with them.
See, that's what I was, what I was suggesting, essentially, would be like, if, if everyone's
not comfortable with just Abby, then could Brian be the one that says, if there's only one application, as Chair of the Planning Board, I say, let's tell them we can move forward?
I don't want that.
I don't think the chair, I don't think you can put that on the chair, legally.
Well, being the new guy, I'd like to see it and talk about it, because I'd like to be more involved with it, so, even if it was one, or it doesn't, I don't care, I'd like to see it.